I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my fellow board members. Welcome to the May 18th, 2020 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Welcome to all of you who are on Zoom call and watching on TV, Facebook, and I believe YouTube. Once again, I'll be invoking the provisions of RSA 91A:23B. Again, in keeping with the recommendation that we stay in a room with 10 or less people, the meeting will be conducted without a quorum of the body physically present in the same location. So we've been doing, again, we, the board welcomes members of the public to access the meeting remotely, and we ask that you continue to recognize and conduct in a unique manner. The usual rules of conduct and decorum will apply. We appreciate everybody's patience. Procedurally, one last thing. All votes by the board tonight will be taken via roll call, and our clerk, Selectwoman Gilman, will take the roll call on all votes. At this time, I'd like to introduce members of the Select Board, and when I introduce you, if you could indicate whether or not you are alone in the room, and if not, who is with you. We'll start with Selectwoman Rontree Olaf.
Alone, yes, here.
Good evening. Selectwoman Brown?
I'm here and I'm alone.
Good evening. Selectwoman Julie Gilman, who's also our clerk. You're muted, Selectwoman Gilman.
Sorry, my husband was talking loudly in the hall. I am alone personally, but my cat is wondering about Scout.
Hello, Scout. And our vice chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan.
Hi, y'all. I am here and I'm alone.
Good evening. Okay, we have a very robust agenda tonight, so I'd like to go right into our first order, which we have three board interviews. And I believe our interviewees were invited. Bob, do we have them in the waiting room?
Anne Sermon is in the waiting room.
Okay, well, we have her up first, so we could let her in if she's not already. Good evening, Miss Sermon, and welcome back.
Can you hear me?
I can now, yes. How are you?
I am fine. I'm not on video, right?
No.
It's okay. Thank you for taking time out. I did see you have a robust agenda, and I'm hoping to stick around for the Gilman Dog Park discussion as well.
Okay. So we have, Miss Sermon has applied for the alternate position on the ZBA. And Anne, of course, Selectwoman Gilman and Selectwoman Cowan and I know you from serving on the Select Board with you. Maybe if you could just give a little bit of background for Selectwoman Rontree Olaf and Selectwoman Brown, and we could ask a few questions.
Certainly. I come from a long line of town involvements from when I was a child, actually. My mom was involved in town planning in the town I grew up in, so it was sort of in the blood that I would get involved in some point in time in town government at one, at various stages. So I was on the Budget Committee in Exeter for about eight years before I ran for selectman. The first time I ran for select person, I actually didn't get in. And then the next time, I did win, and then had six years on the board, and found it a really enlightening experience. And part of what I mentioned in my application was, as you are on the Board of Select, as you are on the Board of Select People, the Select Board, a lot of planning and zoning issues sort of tangentially come your way. I know tonight you've got something with a lot line adjustment and merger lots and this type of thing. So I always thought at some point I would do something, whether it be planning or zoning, because I do believe that planning has a lot to do with the future of a town. We spent many, many months, as you probably know, years ago on the master plan, and I was involved in some of that as well. So my background is I enjoy serving in the town. I find it odd if I'm not doing something. All of a sudden, the day I moved here, I got involved in one way or another. So I thought I would leverage some of what I know on the process, and maybe I could help out in the zoning board of adjustment.
Great, thank you.
I'll take questions or any.
Are there any questions for Miss Sermon?
I guess I'd love to hear Mr. Darryl Brown asking, are there any particular issues that concern you right now the zoning board might be facing?
Specifically, I thought someone might ask that, and actually, there isn't anything specific. I do know that there's some interesting things that might be going on with the Ioka eventually, but there's no specific thing that drew me to say, oh, I must get on ZBA because of X. It's just something that I've had interest in. And I have, I've seen some of the decisions made over the years, and some I've agreed with and some I haven't actually, but there's no specific thing coming down the pipeline that I'm specifically got my eye on, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Brown. Any other questions for Miss Sermon?
No, I know her well.
Okay. Anne, thank you very much for your time tonight. I know you're going to stick around for our regular business. And we will be probably taking up, we have three interviews, including yours, for three different committees. We'll probably be taking up the appointments at our next meeting, June 1st. But obviously, we're happy that she'll stick around for the rest of our meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Okay, next, our next interview, if she's here, is Nina Braun, who has applied for the Communication Advisory Committee. Bob, is Nina with us? Okay, I don't see that Nina is with us, but Kristin Osterwood is. So we'll go to Kristin, who has applied for an alternate position on the Conservation Commission. Kristin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, good evening.
Hello, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. How are you?
Good.
Good. So Kristin Osterwood has applied for a position on the Conservation Commission, and I'll let her give a brief overview. But I've had the pleasure of working with Kristin for the last year. She's also a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And obviously, through knowing Kristin's background and the work that she's done on the Sustainability Committee, I think that Conservation Commission is a very good fit. But Kristin, I'll turn it over to you to give us a little background, introduce yourself, and tell us why you'd like to serve on the CONCOM.
Thank you. Yeah, I just moved to Pittsburgh, or I moved from Pittsburgh to Exeter back in 2018. And it was soon after my youngest son was born, and so I've been slowly getting more involved in the local town and everything. Before I moved to Exeter, when I was in Pittsburgh, I was very involved. I worked at the, a local nonprofit called the Green Building Alliance as a technical and policy director, which was wonderful, because I just got to go into meetings and meet people, and my whole mission was just to help make buildings better, both for the environment and for people. So that was my main focus when I was in Pittsburgh. And since I've moved here, I, actually, I think my first day serving on the Sustainability Advisory Committee, I, was also my first day of work at Unitil. I started as an engineer there last April. And I, they didn't have anyone focused on sustainability at Unitil when I started. And I was in engineering focusing on systems and standards. But they have, as everyone knows, the new building coming up in Exeter. And they'd recently come out with a corporate commitment to sustainability. And with my background, I was like, you have this great corporate commitment to sustainability, and you're building this new building. Would you like some help? And so I've been spending the last six months, eight months, almost all my time on that. And now I'm in a different position. I'm the sustainability analyst for their organization. So I'm really excited. I keep getting to do what I love in all kinds of different ways. And I would love to be more involved in the town and helping make that happen through the Conservation Commission.
Great, terrific. Selectwoman Gilman, you're the Select Board rep to the CONCOM. I'll lead off with you. Do you have any questions for Kristin or any comments about the CONCOM?
Well, comments about the CONCOM, yes, great. They really organize some good activities. They keep some, they keep very good track of our properties and maintenance of them. I think that Kristin might be a great addition, because we do often have things to advertise, and a little communication is good. And there's a little bit of background there. Everything's sustainable about the Conservation Commission, so there you go. I think it would be a good thing to have the two issues together.
Agreed. I think it's important to have a liaison from the Sustainability Advisory Committee with the CONCOM. And we talked about maybe having some of the sustainability members go to CONCOM meetings and vice versa. But I think if Kristin's interested in serving on both, that's just an obvious liaison. Are there any other questions for Kristin?
Hi, yeah, Kristin, was that Pittsburgh, New Hampshire or Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania?
Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I went there for graduate school. I'm originally from Maine, so that's why we moved back to the area.
I didn't think there were too many buildings going up in Pittsburgh, New Hampshire.
No, no, there's not too many people. I think I'd be one of the like 200 people from there. It's pretty small.
The question was, could you speak to your specific, you know, how you think about this? What's your approach is to commercial and conservation? And I guess your special brand of what you bring to this. Yeah, go ahead.
So my view on like, commercial development and sustainability? Is that what you're going for?
Thank you, yeah.
Um, I guess there's a fine balance to be struck. Like, commercial development's very helpful for creating revenue to support sustainable programs. So like, there's definite benefit there. But there's also, I think, especially with the Conservation Commission, there's preserving character is important. So yeah, there's a balance to be struck when you do have businesses. Like, there is the, having incentives to bring businesses to town, but also having the incentives to have them improve the town and not just on a tax-based perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Brown. Any other questions for Kristin? Okay, seeing none. Kristin, we will be taking up the appointment at our next meeting on June 1st. You're welcome to join our meeting at that time. You don't have to. But we will notify you after we, after we take that up. Do you have any final questions for us?
Not at the moment, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your interest.
Yep, thanks.
Okay. Okay, let's circle back. Bob, I don't see that Nina's on, but I may be missing something.
Nope, I don't see her either. I see Bill Campbell's in here, but no other attendees are here.
Okay. If the board's comfortable, I'd like to move into the regular meeting then. First up is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to make comment to the Select Board. I would ask, though, if you have a comment on something that's on the agenda, if you could hold off until that time. But if you've got anything that you would like to weigh in on that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity, and all you need to do is let us know who you are, your name, and where you live. I'm going to pause briefly just to make sure that we don't miss anybody. Okay, I guess no public comment. I do apologize. I was remiss in introducing myself. Nico Papakostinos, and I am alone in the room. We also have Town Manager Rustine with us, and our Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel, and other town staff who will be joining us when spots come up on the agenda. Next, we have Proclamations and Recognitions. A proclamation to be read this evening, celebrating Arbor Day, May 21st, 2020. Selectwoman Gilman, do you have a copy of the proclamation?
I do.
Okay.
You know, I think after being named clerk, I speak more than you do because of this remote meeting. Okay. The Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, a proclamation in the year of our Lord, 2020. Arbor Day, May 21st, 2020. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be put aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Select Board Chair of the Town of Exeter, do hereby proclaim the 21st of May, 2020, as Arbor Day in the Town of Exeter. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generation, of future generations. Dated this 21st day of May, 2020, by the Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Dean, we also have a celebration over by Lincoln Street School on Thursday. And I believe that there will be no more than 10 people on the grounds, but that there's going to be an opportunity for drive-bys.
Right, so we're, yeah, and we're facilitating that with Eileen Flockhart, and who's a member of our tree committee, and also Jay Perkins, our tree warden. So this Thursday at 1:00 PM, you're right, Mr. Chairman, there'll be a small ceremony at Lincoln Street School. And what we'll do in order to keep it to 10 is, if people want to come and park, then we will manage it to sort of rotate people in as that goes, if more, if we get more than 10. But we are keeping it to 10 on site.
Okay, great, thank you.
Not more than 10, I should say.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from our meeting on May 4th, 2020. I'll first ask the board if anybody has any revisions or amendments to the minutes. Then if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 4th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Am I muted?
Aye, no, I was. Aye. Selectwoman Rontree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And the clerk says aye.
Very good. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have an appointment. I'll entertain a motion to move that the Select Board approve Trevor Matera to a full position on the Conservation Committee with a term to expire April 30th, 2023. This appointment, I should note, will vacate Mr. Matera's alternate member position, which has a term date of April 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rontree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, we'll get into our discussion action items at this time. First, on our agenda, I believe this is a public hearing that will need to open for a restoration of an involuntarily merged lot that's pursuant to RSA 674:39-AA. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move to open a public hearing regarding involuntary merger of a lot at 64 High Street.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rontree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And clerk says aye.
Public hearing is now open. Before us, we have an application to restore an involuntarily merged lot pursuant to the RSA, as I quoted before. The applicant is looking to restore the lot to a pre-merger status for tax assessment and regulatory purposes. The location sits on the corner of High Street and Gardiner Street. Mr. Dean, do we have any, anybody from town staff that wishes to speak to this before we open to the public?
We don't have anybody from staff, per se, but we did forward this application on to the Building Department, as well as the Planning Department, and the Assessors, as the, as the application outlines. We did hear back from the Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer on this, and his memo is in the packet regarding the proposal. And he has concurred with the evidence that's submitted as part of the application. And then we verified that as well with the planner. He has no further questions, and neither does assessing.
Okay, thank you. Procedurally, the application looked like everything was in order.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I wanted to point out real quick is I realize our application says the request is submitted to the Select Board prior to December 31st, 2016. I just want to say that that application was created when the law was created. So initially, that was the date, but the law currently states that the request has to be submitted to the governing body prior to December 31st, 2021. So this, this is a timely application. I just want to make sure everybody knew that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. I don't know if we have any abutters who are with us tonight or anybody else from the public that wishes to speak to this.
Mr. Chair, I would like to say something first. I incorrectly stated the number on High Street. I said 64, and it is 65.
Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Attorney Summers.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, this is Sharon Summers. I apologize. I've been having a terrible time either showing up by video or by phone. I apologize for my lateness, but I just came in when I was listening to the Town Manager Rustine talking briefly about the application. And I, we haven't answered any questions which the board members may have. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay.
And this is, just for the record, this is Attorney Sharon Summers. Attorney Summers, are you a resident of Exeter?
Uh, no, I'm not, but I represent, I represent Helen Crow.
That's fine.
Is the board comfortable with Attorney Summers speaking on behalf of her client?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see any opposition. Are there any questions for Attorney Summers?
No, I thought the documentation was pretty thorough.
Yeah, it looked pretty straightforward to me. Attorney Summers, do you have anything to state beyond your letter to the board on behalf of your client, or?
I don't, I don't think so. I think it's, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and we just appreciate the board's time. We appreciate the efforts of Doug Eastman in assisting with this process, and we hope that the board will approve the request.
Thank you very much for making yourself available, and I'll give one last chance for the public to weigh in if there are any abutters. I will pause momentarily just to see if anybody has their hand up. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Nico, if I can just mention, because there is one person I see who is on a telephone in the audience. If you were wishing to speak to anything, you can press star nine on the phone to raise your hand, just in case you called in to speak to any of the issues here.
Bob, I will pause again briefly to allow that, if that's the case. Okay, seeing none, again, bringing it back to the board. Do any of the board members have any questions or comments with respect to this request?
I do not. I'm quite familiar with the property in question.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the involuntarily, involuntary lot merger at 65 High Street, Tax Map 71, Lot 106.
Moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rontree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
It passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, we do, actually.
It looks like William Campbell. There's the hammer raised, William Campbell.
Okay.
I don't know.
We've, um...
Nope, hands down.
We have a motion to close the public hearing? In a second? Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rontree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And clerk says aye.
Okay. I hope the hearing is closed. Next, we have the quarterly financial report for quarter one through March 31st. Mr. Dean, do we have the Finance Director on?
Um, I would have to defer to our host here. I don't see her name as of yet. Can we ask Mr. Glackkey about that?
Yeah, I don't see her as an attendee.
Sorry, what was the name again?
Doreen.
Oh, yeah, Doreen is not in the meeting currently, but was sent an invitation.
All right.
Mr. Dean, we can do one of two things. If you're comfortable giving us that update, that's fine. Or if we want to give Doreen some time to get back, maybe we could jump to your budget update?
Sure, we can do that, and maybe I can, I can refer to the quarterly financial report while we do the budget, and we can go from there.
Great.
So, not a problem. We can do that. So just as a matter of course, I prepared for the board packet this week a memo that talks about the FY20 budget and sort of where things stand at the moment. As you know, with the pandemic, it's really been a day-to-day mission to keep, keep reviewing our budgets and also follow all of the various potential funding sources that we have out there and so forth. So unfortunately, we could be faced with a fairly significant imbalance, if you will, in the budget, depending upon what happens as the fiscal year goes on. We're about four and a half months into the fiscal year right now. And so we're, we're in a different position than communities that are, have their fiscal years ending on June 30th. Ours ends on December 31st, so it's a different, it's a different kind of budget cycle. So at the last department manager meeting, I put a list of things together that I wanted departments to look at and give me some scenarios in terms of what kinds of things we could ratchet back, cut back on, and try to create as much... and try to create as much space as we could in the event that we may have an issue later on during the year. And I'm glad to say that they were very supportive of that, understanding. I know departments definitely went back and really looked at their budgets again. And again, acknowledging this is a unique situation. So everything that was put together on the list that they gave me is, I would say, an advanced work in progress at this point. But I do have a few areas of concern that I'll raise with the board. One is the Meals and Rooms tax distribution, which is a real unknown. And also the state revenue sharing that was just restored. Now, that represents about $938,000 in revenue to the town. So that is a big chunk of our revenue. And also, our motor vehicles for April. And I must say, this was unlike a couple of our counterparts. I checked a couple of towns around us, and they were actually up in motor vehicles, and we were going back and forth and trying to figure out why that was. But for us, we were off about $55,000 in April, year over year from 2020 to 2019. So we need to closely monitor that in May and in June to kind of see what the trends look like. But that's on the revenue side. Going back to the expense side, there's a list of items in the budget that we looked at, and we scanned as many budgets as we could. And in total, we came up with about $1.3 million in what I'm calling budget deferrals. And when you go down the list, you'll see, and basically what this is, is it's money that has been budgeted for but hasn't yet been spent. And a lot of it relies on, it's a combination of things really, but it involves freezing any kind of out-of-state travel and conferences, cutting back on training, cutting back on some wage accounts. We've had some part-time positions that have either retired voluntarily or have decided to sort of cut back on their own schedule due to the pandemic and that sort of thing, and we've supported that. We do have some open positions right now that we would defer hiring. And again, I just want to stress that this isn't easy to do, and it's nothing we want to do, but we're trying to be reactive to the situation we're currently in. And so as you go down the list, you see there is a police officer position open. There's a part-time position that's been eliminated in that department as well administratively. There's a, we just had the fire chief retirement, so we can defer the hiring of the assistant chief. There's also some capital in the fire, the EOC upgrade that was actually partially funded in this cycle. We could defer that. In Public Works, there's a number of different things that we looked at. Some contract services, we would eliminate the fall collection of leaves that we normally do. There is a general reduction in the snow and ice budget. If you remember the FY20 budget, we advocated for a signal adjustment on Hampton Road for the rec park, and we would defer that. We would defer $200,000 out of our paving budget, which is currently $800,000. We would defer hiring in engineering tech. Our engineering tech actually went to work for the state, to DES, so that's a vacant position that we would hold off on filling for the time being. We have a mechanic position and an HVA plumber tech position that we would defer. For the, again, this is looking at this year, hopefully only, but defer those hires till 2021. And then a general reduction in the maintenance projects budget. And then as you see in Parks and Rec, there are fireworks and summer concerts. I know we're going to talk about that a little bit later tonight as far as events that may get deferred or postponed in 2020. So there's a cost to those events, and obviously, we end up generating some savings from that. Also, in Parks and Rec, there's senior programming that was, again, advocated for and was passed as part of this year's 2020 budget, and we're looking at a 50% reduction in that with the senior center closed. We would defer purchase of a mower and some landscaping. The library, we have asked about a budget reduction. We haven't heard back from them yet, but certainly would include them in the conversation as we continue to move forward. And then there are a number of warrant articles, the sedan replacement, you remember that? That was a $24,000 budget item, the mini loader, Parks and Rec, the sidewalks capital reserve fund appropriation of $60,000, the public safety radio system upgrade, and the pickpocket dam. All of those items passed at the voters' level. And deferring all of those would add up to about a little under $331,000. So that, right now, if we took every action here, and again, most of these are in place, if you will, sort of tacitly in creating a deferral process again and just kind of waiting how the state aid evolves or the federal government maybe will step in and help us plug those revenues. And if they do that, we'll certainly be in better shape. But right now, I think we really need to hold the line on these things until we know more. So that's in the general fund. That's about $1,003,000. And in the water and sewer funds, Public Works has created a reduction of $200,000 in both of those funds, each fund, for a total of $400,000, just in anticipation of perhaps some decline in revenue in water and sewer. Although, we've really sort of had a little bit of a back and forth with that because with people at home more frequently, actually, water use is probably more likely to go up, which translates into a sewer increase. But again, we also have some wild cards right now in terms of where people will be in terms of paying their bills and so forth. We don't really know at this point. We just have the first half tax warrant going out the door here shortly. So again, we'll know more in 30 days, but we wanted to act as quickly as we could, and I just wanted to thank all the departments for their participation and really understanding the situation we're in, and I think they did a very nice job with the list.
I'll take a question. Selectman Brown?
Thanks. Just two questions. You mentioned 200K savings out of the 800 for, was that the road paving?
Right, the town's paving budget, right.
So 800 was for the whole year or?
Correct.
Yeah, and so why just the 200 of the 800?
I think, well, I mean, we could go back on that. It may be that we end up, depending upon the financial situation, maybe we need to look at that again and take more. But I think we're trying to take a balanced approach of a 10% reduction in the departments. And it's hard to do across-the-board reductions, so we really wanted to do like a 10%, but also look at some of the smaller departments and say, you know, 10% out of 200,000 is X, right? But 10% out of a million is going to be more than that. So at this point, we did ask for that as a percentage, but it may be that we have to go back and look at deferring more of that. So it's a decent question, and again, like I said, I think here's where we are right now. But we can certainly work on this list and take any concerns you have and go back and look for more if we need to, or modify the list in some way.
Thanks, and I just have two more questions. One was sort of a point of information. So capital reserve, you mentioned general fund, and then some of these projects are out of the capital reserve, right? Does that, not spending that money, you couldn't spend it, not spending it doesn't really, does that help? Because you couldn't spend it any other way anyway?
So what it does is, when we set up our budget, we set it up with revenues calculated a certain amount, and then obviously, the budget, and we anticipate using some level of fund balance to the budget. But by sort of pre-planning not to spend this, and again, there's also been some discussions about the governor making an adjustment to allow cities and towns to actually reduce their appropriations. Because right now, what would happen is if this money goes unspent, technically, it goes into fund balance. But again, we would have to sort of tweak the revenue side of the house, if you will, to sort of balance this out. So it makes the budget whole, because the goal is we don't want to actually tax this money or raise it in our tax rate in the fall if we agree that we want to defer it.
Got it. And the last question is, the 64K on the sidewalk made me think of it. Is there other expenditures that if we spent it, we'd be infusing money into the local contractor force?
If we spent the money?
Yeah, are there any projects where spending it would actually help the local economy?
We can take a look at that. I'm not, I mean, of the capital expenses that you see here, I mean, usually, that gives a bump, especially when we buy local. So that's one of those things that is in there. As far as an in-town economy relationship, exactly, you'd have to scrub this a little bit more, but I don't think any of the vendors that are in here are necessarily in-town vendors. So I don't, maybe another way to answer that is I don't think any of these reductions hurt vendors that are in the town of Exeter.
Got it. Thanks. That was it.
Thank you, Selectman Brown. Any other questions for Mr. Dean? Mr. Dean, I have one. You talked about the money that passed in the warrant for the pickpocket. Deferring that, what type of any legal ramifications would that bring to the town?
So we have a letter of deficiency that basically requires us to complete tasks along a timeline. And the charge that we've asked Public Works to carry is to go back to DES, explain to them what our situation is, and to get something in writing from them, basically pushing off the milestones that were associated with this $110,000 till 2021. So in terms of a legal issue, I'd probably stay away from that way to describe it at this point until we can hear from DES and get some feedback, and then we can talk about that and any ramifications it could have. But I don't, in the past, DES has been good in working with the town on issues. And again, we're in, like many towns, I mean, one of the things we find ourselves in is we're a town that had our budget approved in March. And of course, there are a lot of towns out there that haven't even had their town meeting yet because of the pandemic that are in a different situation altogether, trying to scramble in a different way. So I guess my answer at this point is, the hope is that logic will prevail, and we won't get involved in any. There's no consent decree. It's a letter of deficiency, which certainly we have to attend to. But in my mind, it carries less weight than a legal order. And hopefully, we'll be able to, again, push some of those dates out a little bit to alleviate the pressure.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dean on potential budget deferrals in FY2020? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dean. I see that Doreen is online, so we could go back to that agenda item. Doreen, if you're ready, we'd love to hear your quarterly report for Q1. Good evening.
Hi, can you hear, everyone hear me?
We can, yes, see you and hear you. Good evening.
All right, I can't tell. Good evening. Yes, I'm here tonight with the Q1 report in a very atypical situation, as everyone's experienced. Just wanted to quickly say that we continue to be busy in the Finance Department. We're currently working on our first remote audit, so that's been interesting. It's taking a little bit longer, but it is going well so far. We're also working on the spring bonding of the library renovations and the surface water review, which will be about $5.1 million. And also, COVID-19 and new legislation and announcements keep us busy, particularly in the payroll area. We've had a lot of different implementations we have to adapt to in the payroll area for different things that come up. So I just wanted to mention, those are a few of the things that we're working on. So I just wanted to say a quick hello to the new select people I have not yet met, Selectman Brown and Selectwoman, I'm going to say it wrong, Roundtree Olaf.
Roundtree Olaf, it's good.
Okay, well, I look forward to meeting you in person someday, hopefully, when all of this is over.
Same, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so just to start it, and I know Russ already alluded to cuts, so things I'm talking about now are reflective of the budget that was voted upon this past March, you know, and it was developed, of course, many, many months in advance of knowing that we had an epidemic on its way. So my report is pretty comprehensive, and I just am going to go over some highlights this evening, and I'll pause after each fund if anyone has questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so just getting into the revenues, and this is for the month ended March 31st of 2020. The general fund revenues, year over year, are basically flat at $1.2 million. There is going to be, as Russ explained, there's going concerns about the ability of the homeowners to pay their property taxes by July 1st. We will know more definitely by the end of the second quarter, how that's looking for us. But again, the impact is unknown. The second biggest revenue is the motor vehicle, which through March was down $13,000 over the prior year, so that is of concern. And again, we still don't know what the impact will be by the end of the year. We have experienced, due to the feds lowering the interest rates, we have gone from a 2.35% investment interest rate to 0.20% at Citizens Bank. We did very well last year with interest income, and I don't see that happening again. So that's another source of maybe $100,000 in a revenue loss that we may see this year. Again, we'll know a little bit more as things progress. In the general fund expense area, we're at 21% spent at $4.2 million at the end of the first quarter. Basically, everybody, every department, and I list them, general government, finance, planning, police, fire, and so forth, is right around that 25% on the average spending. And again, Russ has worked with everyone to see what we can do to reduce expenditures going forward. The biggest help this year is that we didn't have a lot of snow removal. Last year, we were sitting at $270,000 in expense, or 86% of that budget being used. This year, it's a lot better, 42% and $140,000. We do have a net deficit at the end of the quarter, which is typical because we have not yet billed for the property taxes, which is our greatest source of revenue. And that typically will change. I don't know what to say at this point regarding that. My hope is that we will see that go positive for the end of Q3. Does anyone have questions on my report for the general fund?
Doreen and Nico, I have one. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Nico.
I didn't know if somebody else had a question. Okay. Historically, when it's tax season, do we know what percent deficiency there's been in the past? And have we mapped out possibilities for, you know, either late payments or non-payments where we would sort of start to get into trouble in terms of the revenue?
Well, I did do an estimate, I don't know, a week or so ago, that I shared with Russ, and it's a very conservative worst-case type scenario where I know for the month of April, 25% of US homeowners did not make their mortgage payments. So if I take that same percentage and multiply that, we'd have 60% of people that pay their own taxes versus 40% roughly that escrow. We could be missing out on as much as $3.75 million. I consider that, like I said, maybe more of a worst-case scenario, but that was something that I wanted, you know, the Town Manager to be aware of. We could be looking at that. On the positive side, I did see that the CARES Act money would pick up tan interest, because that was definitely something we did not anticipate doing, but it could be paid for by the CARES Act money, so we may know more about that moving forward. Typically, we collect, as of July 1st, which if it's the due date, between 95% and 95% of our taxes. That's been, you know, pretty steady.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Okay, the water fund is next, and there was a slight dip in revenue from the prior year. The water consumption was down by 13K. I don't expect to see that continue. We were just beginning the stay-at-home orders at that point. We were just beginning the stay-at-home orders at that point. So I think we do expect to see an increase in water usage for the next few quarters. The receivables in arrears for water is $43,000, which is a little maybe higher than average. We are not allowed to do shut-offs during this time period due to the governor's orders. And we typically do that, and that usually inspires some folks to pay. The expenses year-to-date have been $915,000, or 24% spent, again, at a respectable rate of expenses. The biggest increase this year is $92,000 due to the surface water plant coming online for our debt service. Does anyone have questions in the water budget? No.
Quick question. For the water shut-offs, so once the governor lifts the restrictions, then I assume the same rules will apply?
That's correct.
So what will happen to people who haven't paid and have racked up, you know, far more than they might have? Are there, are there any?
We do, we do work with residents. It's happened in the past, not due to a pandemic, but
Right.
Yes, we have the ability to work with the ratepayers.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be a major shock to people financially as well. Thank you.
Moving on to the sewer fund budget, I just, you can see it, but I just wanted to point out, that budget in and of itself has gone up $5 million from the prior year to $7.8 million. And that's basically because the wastewater treatment plant came online last year. And it brings a lot of extra expenditures and maintenance because of that. But it was a mandated project, and we really had no choice in the matter. Right now, the sewer revenues are looking good. They're at $1.44 million, which is $550,000 above prior year this time. So that does seem better than the water fund at the moment. And I believe we had an extra increase in those rates last year for that. The treatment expenses are up, and that's an area directly related to the new treatment plant. They're up $71,000, and a lot of it is due to personnel, electricity, laboratory testing, equipment maintenance, and chemicals. And those things are more costly with a bigger plant. And also in the debt service area, we were flat through this quarter as far as payment. But in the late in the year, we're going to owe $4.85 million, which is an 88% increase year-over-year. And that's our payment for the wastewater treatment plant. At the moment, we are at a positive net income for this fund of $818,000. Questions for the water fund, anyone? All right. And now, it's just, this is very brief. I'll go into the revolving funds. We have a cable TV revolving fund that's running at a net deficit, and that's basically timing of payments from Comcast. They usually don't pay us till our Q2, so that will turn around and look better at the end of the next quarter. I don't want to speak too much about revolving fund. It is in my report. I know that's going to be widely discussed later. So I'll leave that for the folks to talk about camp and programs and so forth. And then, last but not least, the EMS revolving. It looked pretty sturdy, but in talking with Chief Wilking, a lot of the revenue we saw was from Q4 payments. And the calls are actually down in March through May. And so overtime's down. And also wanted to mention that we did receive $15,000 from the federal government toward payments that people can't make for COVID-19 transport, or we could pay the copays for the Medicare recipients. So that's a little bit of help in that area. Does anyone have any questions on the budget at all? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. And thank you to everybody in the finance department for your hard work during this.
Thank you very much.
And I just wanted to point out, too, for the benefit of the two new board members that we have as well, we say this all the time, but if you have any questions about this report at all, please feel free to reach out to either one of us, to Doreen or myself, if you have any more detailed questions. I know it's a lot to take in. There's a lot of information here. And so, you know, we're happy to follow up on any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Okay. Next discussion item this evening revolves around Gilman Park. I believe in our last meeting, we had some public comment requesting that the board place this on the agenda for possibly revising or modifying rather the town ordinance with respect to dogs, specifically at Gilman Park. I do know that we have some public who's here to comment tonight, and we'd like to hear from each member of the public. But first, Mr. Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were, if the board were to consider modifying the ordinance, it would require three successive public hearings before the board could take action. Am I correct?
Right. What we do, our process is that we do three readings of any ordinance change. And what we would do for that is if the board wanted to take this up in a more formal way, we would give you a draft amended ordinance. And then you would go through this series of readings and hear from the public. And it gives the public enough time to weigh in over the course of three sufficient meetings, and the board a chance to amend or change or make any updates you feel are part of that process as we go along.
Okay. Thank you. Before we open it up to the public, do any of the board have any questions for Mr. Dean about the history of this ordinance or anything else? And obviously, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion, but I'd like to allow board members an opportunity to ask Mr. Dean any historical questions.
Yeah. And we did include in the packet, the 1990s, there was some talk about what went on in the 1990s. So we actually dug up as much as we could. And I think the board members know by now that, you know, in 2008, the Gilman Park trustees transferred the property over to the town to be held in a trust in easement under the Southeast Land Trust with a number of different provisions in there. So even though the history's in the packet with the Gilman Park trustees, it really doesn't apply to the current situation, but it definitely informs what the conversations were back then in 1996.
Great. Selectwoman Gilman, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have all that information, which is very handy from the 1990s, to see what the intent of the park's use was for and the different discussions around who maintained what and who paid for it in excess. But I just wondered, we didn't include the Southeast Land Trust paperwork, too, and that might influence my decision? I don't know.
Right. And I have, and I did notice that this topic is referred to in the easement under Section L of Page 5, which basically, which says, "The grantor shall not designate the property or any portion of the property primarily for the benefit of enjoyment by and use by dogs." So that's what the easement states.
Okay.
Thank you. Bob, at this time, I'd like to open this up for public comment, for anybody out in the public who wishes to weigh in on this. I ask, please, that you state your name and your address, and we'd love to hear from you.
Also, Dan, you can go ahead and maybe introduce who you're giving speaking privileges to.
All right. We are going to be starting with William Campbell.
Good evening, Bill.
If you're having a microphone issue, you can try calling back at the phone number that's listed on the agenda. There might be a microphone issue for you, Will, or Bill.
Is Bill still trying to connect?
Yep. He should be able to talk now, but I'm not hearing anything.
He is currently locked talk and has been unmuted a couple times.
How about that?
Here he is. Hi, Bill.
Hi. Can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can. How are you?
All right. Go ahead. Thanks. I just wanted, Russ mentioned it, but I kind of missed it. What's the opinion of the celt easement? They, I know they prevented us from having a town garden out there. Do they also, but do they permit a dog park?
So the answer to that question is we have been wrestling with that dog park issue for a while now in the town, as we all know. And I was contacted, the last time this issue came up was 2017. And the dog park question was answered by the Southeast Land Trust, as the short answer is that having a dog park at Gilman Park is not an allowable use as the conservation easement specifically states in Section 2L that the grantor shall not designate the property or any portion of the property primarily for the benefit of enjoyment by and use of dogs. So Deborah Gord, who wrote this letter to the town, went on to say, there's a longer explanation for this, of course, which is that Gilman Park was protected for water quality, wildlife habitat, the public water supply, et cetera, which a dog park is not necessarily compatible with. But with the term above, it's evident that this was something that those involved with placing the conservation easement on Gilman Park clearly did not want to happen. So there was the thank you attached to that letter, but that was the interpretation of the celt at that point.
So that would seem to prevent us from even considering a dog park, wouldn't it? If you violate the, you can't violate the easement.
That's what we're treating it as right now, as a prohibition against a dog park.
Okay.
Bill, are you still there?
I just, just went off.
No, I can hear you now.
Okay. Well, I'm just thinking, why are we discussing it if it can't occur? Did I miss something?
Russ, I thought when we had our conversation during the last meeting, and I may have misunderstood, but I thought that we were going to have this discussion tonight because the select board could take action.
Right. So there's two branches to this tree. This is the issue. Some people have looked at Gilman Park as able to have a dog park in the park exclusively for dogs. But the easement speaks differently to that, and the interpretation by the celt has been that that's not the case. But if you wanted to amend the town ordinance, which prohibits dogs in Gilman Park and allow them in the park in some form, with some form of a leash and so forth, that is a different issue that's controlled by the select board under the town ordinance.
Gotcha.
Two different issues.
So Bill, my understanding, and we're going to let, I know there are some people that wish to speak to this, who we've heard from via email. My understanding is that people are not looking to have a dog park per se, but for dogs to have access to the trails. And again, I'm not going to speak for the public, but that's the understanding that I've received from the people that have corresponded with us.
Okay. Let you go.
Thank you, Bill. Be well. Anybody else, Bob?
Next up, we have Ann Sermon.
Hi, Ann.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I was muted by mistake. First, thank you so much for, I know there's a lot of folks that have, I read through the packet, and a lot of folks that have expressed interest in this. When I read the memo from the chief and also the animal control officer, it did sound more as though they wanted this to be used as an access point where people with dogs on leash could go into the park and then go into where the, basically, the PEA trails are. And I've certainly been over there, you know, many times over the years, or in that area. And it's a neat park because it is sort of remote. It's not, you know, it's not nearly, I don't think it gets the use that some of the other parks got. But I guess that is where we're trying to get down to a definition of, is it a park in sort of the true definition of park? Or is it actually more of an access area? Now, you might have, so maybe people could linger for a little bit or do whatever, but I think you just have to be really clear about what that is. Because I don't think either the chief or the animal control officer's notion was anything more than an access point, and the dogs would be allowed to go through there, and so the people wouldn't think that they couldn't. But, you know, that's probably a few all to decide how you want to do that. But that was just part of what I wanted to get clear, is if it was an actual park or was it an access point? And then you may want to get into something about how would people monitor that? I know people get very concerned about dog waste. I understand that completely. I'm a dog owner, and I'm pretty fixated on making sure that I do pick up. But that's, I think, the issue with the water nearby. I understand why people are concerned about that as well. So I've kind of said a lot, but I just wanted to make sure we're clear on which is the thing that we're trying to do, if it's access, as the chair mentioned, versus an actual park where people would be hanging out and congregating with their dogs. I don't think that's what's contemplated here, or would be allowed by celt anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sermon. Bob, I know we probably have a few more. Who's next?
We have Joanna Pellerin.
Okay. Good evening, Joanna.
Joanna, our recording secretary?
No, Joanna.
Joanna Pellerin, Jody Pellerin, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Joanna, good evening. This is Nico Papakosidis. Are you a resident of Exeter?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I think that I would very much like to put a little timeline on the happenings that have led to this point with Gilman Park, starting with the fact that I was one of the last group of trustees to own and run the park. So in 1996, as owners of the park, we discovered that the town had placed us on the dog ordinance as a no-dog-walking place, which we found very upsetting because we knew a lot of people liked to walk through there to the connecting trails, as Ann has mentioned, and really enjoy the park with their pets on a leash. And so we came before the select board at that time and said that really, it shouldn't be under the Exeter ordinance because it was a privately owned park. And that was a great surprise to the select board, who then questioned that. So we went to Charlie Tucker, attorney Charlie Tucker, and he sent a lovely letter to the select board explaining that we were indeed owners of the park. And the first one's appointed by Daniel and Minnie Gilman in 18 whatever, and that we replaced ourselves. The town did not appoint us. No one elected us. And that was the way it's worked for over 100 years. Well, while that was going through, and then the board accepted that, we assumed that life was going to go on. We were going to have dogs through the park. And we, I remember writing the letter to the select board, asking them to remove us from the dog ordinance. Now, the next steps, I don't know, because we're still in the dog ordinance. We went on presuming that dogs could walk in the park. We did not want them on the ball fields. We wanted them on leashes, and we made a point of that. So there's some little hitch here historically of, did we come off of the ordinance? When? Were there, were there public hearings, whatever? And if we didn't come off, then we've been on there illegally all these years. So our next effort at that time was to have a proper survey done and do a lot of historical research, and then get Southeast Land Trust to take the park in conservation easement, so that then we could turn it over to the town. So that's the sequence. We, the trustees, placed the park under conservation easement. We talked with the land trust when they took over, and we said, dogs are fine, but this is not a place for a dog park. And that's one of the reasons why they put that in the easement. So, here we are today with people wanting to walk their dogs on beautiful trail system and not being allowed to. So, I hope I've put the sequence, the timing, the sequence in order for you, and that I hope that it's been helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Before we get to our next commenter, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a quick question. Joanna, I, I remember that you hopped on for a public comment at our last meeting two weeks ago and made mention of the trustees of Gilman Park issue that came up in 1996. Does anyone have any record of what happened after that discussion took place? Was it just a discussion? I'm, I'm not understanding what happened between 1996 and now, that there is such massive confusion.
That has been my question as well. Am I heard, or am I talking to myself?
No, Joanna.
No, we can hear you.
Okay. That, that's our question. Now that, that this public question has come up from people who still enjoy or would like to enjoy walking their dogs there. And we had assumed that, we took care of that in 1996. But evidently, we've just remained on the list of, of the ordinance, 910. Listed there is an Exeter Park, which it wasn't at the time, where people were not allowed to walk their dogs. So, I think there's just been a large gap, and, and there was an amnesia after we proved our point, thinking that, well, we've proved our point, but we didn't find out if they actually removed it. So, I don't know what kind of a legal thing that makes, but it's an interesting situation.
So, there may be, and I'll take a look for this, there may be some lease agreements that are subsequent to this draft memorandum of understanding between the trustees and the select board, which I, we were not able to come up with a signed copy of this MOU. We did ask the town clerk to give us whatever they could. And there was, there was a proposed lease agreement after that, but I don't know that it would have spoken to this issue of the dogs. Just to fill in maybe a little bit more of that history.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, the board can only vote on, based on the deed, unless there was some lease agreement provided. Is that correct?
That, that's my understanding. Correct, Mr. Dean?
Right. I mean, depending upon how you wanted to go with this, if you wanted to pursue making this a dog-friendly park, if you will, and allow it under certain conditions, what we would do is go ask the Southeast Land Trust in a formal way, do you believe this conflicts with your easement over the property? We have to do that as a matter, of course, anyway, based on all the provisions of the easement, so we would do that. And if it was a conflict at that point, then we consider it a moot point, a little bit like the community garden, which they considered to be conflictual with the terms of the easement.
But I, I think too, I think what Selectwoman Brown was saying is that if we don't have, you know, a legal change in that ordinance, you know, should people still be able to walk their dogs as they always did? Without it, without a signed copy of that MOU?
Well, there, there's been a reference to having the dog ordinance with Gilman Park in it, and being told it can't be in it. But we can't find anything that it was removed. So, the question you're asking is, do we need to go back and ask the town council to look at this and say, well, it should have been removed, and so therefore you have to remove it based upon what we know about the history? That's, that's a question we'd have to ask.
Okay.
And then as well, a follow-up to that is, if there's a lease agreement or an MOU, wouldn't it be a case where citizens petitioning to revise the lease agreement? But it just feels like the board is charged with withholding what's the most viable document written. And so, if the most viable present document is here, if there's another, or if we'd like to revise that, it seems odd that it would be the pleasure of the board to, to revise a deed, to revise, even to revise a lease agreement, rather than having citizens petition for the revision of a lease, because then the board could just go around petitioning, or just saying, hey, we'd like to revise different agreements.
Yeah, I, I wanted to point out too, that the 2012 easement with the Selt was the product of a collaboration between the Gilman Park trustees of the time and the, and the town select board and so forth. So, that was, that easement was all drafted up under a process and a side press petition that had to be made regarding the property and so forth. So, it was a lengthy process that the town underwent at that time. And it, it also postdates the ownership or the private ownership, if you will. In other words, the animal control ordinance that, that we reference predates the transfer of the property from the Gilman Park trustees over to the town via the easement held by the Southeast Land Trust. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Selectwoman Gilman, you had, you had your hand up?
I think Russ might have answered my question about when the ordinance did or didn't change. Don't we, I couldn't find it on the website. So, but don't we typically keep a notice of, you know, the date that it was updated, last updated, last updated, last updated, kind of thing?
We, we would if it was updated in the last several years, but the town clerk would have the hit, the, the official history of the ordinance would be with the town clerk. So, the animal, the animal control ordinance, I, I can say it, it has never been updated in, in my time as town manager, that's 2005. If it, if it had been before that, that would be something that we'd have to research and see what we have on the books. And the town clerk would have any changes that were made to the ordinance going back to when it was originally enacted.
Yeah, I just would, it would be good to solve the mystery of why this never changed, or, you know, the memorandum of understanding mentioned, or later the minutes describe a lease, and as you said, that never occurred. Maybe it did occur sometime, but, and that's when the ordinance changed. It's a mystery.
Well, I, there was clearly some discussion at the time, but there was nothing that indicated that there was a change to the prohibition of dogs at Gilman Park that we can find at this point.
Or a change to the allowing dogs.
Or, yeah, I'm sorry. That addressed this issue, and, and other than what's in the packet so far, which is a back and forth conversation occurring at that time between the select board and some of the Gilman Park trustees and Mr. Dicey, who was our rec director at the time. And he may have been a Gilman Park trustee, but I'm not sure about that.
Bob, are there any other members of the public who wish to weigh in? If you can tell with any hands up.
Ann has her hand up.
The sermon. You look muted.
I'm unmuted now. Yes, real quick, and I know you want to move on. I just want one to circle back real quick. I agree, when you follow this whole discussion, there's a work session that takes place, and then there's a memorandum written up that's in a draft form. It's almost as though they talk, the, the whole point of doing that work session was to talk about the dog part, part. And then, when they wrote it, they really don't even talk about that. So, that's bizarre. And then, you're right, the lease doesn't seem to exist either. But I want to go back real quick to the whole notion, if, if you bring it fast forward to just current day and how you finally decide you want to talk to Southeast Land Trust, I really think the notion of the word "park" needs to be set aside. It's, it's an access point, because I think, because it really isn't a park. It's almost like what people are telling people to do on beaches pretty soon. You can't sit down on your blanket. You have to keep moving. So, I think if, if it's made clear to Southeast Land Trust that this is an access point to the trails, I think that's going to help them get there. I just think that's, I just wanted to make that last point, that it's not really a dog park. And if we use that term, I don't think that's going to help the situation. That it's an access point to the trails. Thanks, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sermon.
I do live in Exeter.
Thank you. We know you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Should we bring it back to the board? Any other members of the public? And I am going to pause for a second to see if anybody else would like to speak.
Martha has her hand up.
Hi, Martha, you're, you're muted.
Unmuted.
There you are. We hear you. Good evening, Martha.
Good evening. My name is Martha Pennell, and I live at Five Timber Lane here in Exeter. And I served with Jody and the late Harry Fair, and also Peter Smith as the last remaining trustees before we transferred the park to the, over to the town. And it was my, I was going along with the assumption that dogs were going to be welcome to in the park, that this was going to be a park, a park where you could sit down and have, have a picnic and have your dog on a leash. In fact, I believe Jody wrote a letter to the selectman, which I have a copy of, asking for the dog ordinance to be changed. And I just assumed that it had, and when I went ahead and, and had these discussions, I was under the impression that, yes, that this, that we would allow dogs to be walked in the park, and that, but however, we will not allow a dog park. And so, I was very surprised to see that this issue has come up now. But anyways, and, and when I've, I guess my point being that I was going, I, I signed the, I don't know as I signed it, but I went along with the trustees in turning it over to the town with the easement, with the idea that the dogs, it would be, dogs would be welcome in the park on a leash. And that's all. Okay, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Martha. Any other members of the public at this time? And I don't see any hands up. So, let's bring this back to the board now. I, I have a couple of questions and concerns, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board first, if anybody has any opinions, questions, comments. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, I would like to hear from Ms. Perry about the water quality, water, excuse me, water quality issue. And if you should think it would make a difference, because I, I don't want to talk about a dog park. I, I want to talk about dogs on leashes roaming with their owners or walkers. If that, if you think that will make a dent, maybe, in how much we projected in the past, dog feces. Because I know it was an issue also across Clemson Pond.
So, yes, there are two concerns with, everybody can hear me, first of all, I want to make sure.
Yes, hi Jen.
Thank you. I, there are two concerns. One is a protective radius around the well at Gilman Park. That is a 400-foot radius, which essentially gets you to the river. And I, I haven't had success getting through to New Hampshire DES. But my sense is that if it's dogs on leash and owners are responsible about picking up after their dogs, that shouldn't be too big of a concern. But if it were an active dog park, I believe that would be contrary to a typical wellhead protection area. But in addition to that, we do have the river intake that is directly across from the boat launch. And that's where our surface water intake is in the river, and that water is pumped to the surface water treatment plant for treatment. In a way, that's more susceptible, if you will, to dog contamination. We do have full treatment at the water treatment plant, as we do with the groundwater. But it's, it's, it's just not very good maintenance, if you will. It's not something that you would normally be promoting in the vicinity of a drinking water intake. So, again, I, I know that's not what you're talking about, having an actual dog park. But even with trail access and trail maintenance, it needs to be done very responsibly, and it needs to be kept clean.
Thank you, Jen. I was also concerned. Any other questions from the board or any comments?
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question. Thank you so much. I am a new dog owner. And he's a very cute puppy. And I'm just wondering, you know, you know, I try to always be responsible and pick everything up, but sometimes, like, you just can't grab it all. And I don't want to have a discussion where we talk about dog poop. But, but, you know, oftentimes, there are not people who are responsible. And what is going to be the enforcement mechanism? How much dog waste is too much? You know, like, where's the tipping scale here? And I guess, maybe I'm looking at you, Jennifer, to help answer these questions, because I am concerned about the safety of our drinking water. I'm concerned about the health of our river. I want dog owners to have a place to take their dogs and walk them responsibly, but I also, you know, what are, you know, sort of what are we talking about? How many people not picking up after their dogs are we, are we worried about, and are we endangering our water quality?
Well, I, and I'd encourage the chief to, to speak up too, because I, I'm not an animal control officer. But my sense in just the maintenance of any facilities, if it's not kept clean, people, other people will stop taking care too. It's like, when you have graffiti, it begets graffiti. And the depart, Public Works Department has kept a pet waste station out there, not probably realizing that it was a park area that was not, that was excluded in the, the ordinance, the park ordinance. When, and we've always been able to keep, maintain that station, and we keep the bags there. But we don't physically go out and check to make sure that people are picking up. We don't have the time to walk the trails and walk the park and things of that nature. So, I don't know how well it's been maintained. Maybe somebody else on tonight, who is a frequent walker out there, could, could attest to that. But that is the concern. If it can't be kept clean, it begets more uncleanliness. So, it, it really doesn't, I couldn't give you a specific number, but it doesn't take much. If people start to disregard the requirement to pick up, pretty soon, other people disregard, and it, and it gets out of control pretty fast.
Thank you, Jen. Any other questions?
Sorry, one more question to sort of follow up. Like, where is the trigger mechanism to let us know that we've reached a tipping point in terms of water safety? Like, does that, is that recorded? I, I mean, I know you're testing all the time, but what are we measuring, and how soon would we find out?
So, the type of testing that we do probably wouldn't be, you know, it's going to be so dilute on most occasions. But if, let's say, there's a heavy rainstorm, or just enough of a rainstorm, that it were to flush materials from the Gilman Park area, and, you know, the chances of us catching that are pretty small. So, I don't think you want to rely on water testing that we're doing as being the indicator. I think it needs to be visually observed, that materials are being left behind and not being picked up. That's, that's got to be the indicator. I don't think you want to base it just on water quality testing.
Jen, it's Nico. I have a follow-up to that. If it remained a place where people could just have access to the trails, and they're presumably walking their dog on a leash, you know, with a bag to pick up any, any debris, and they're walking through the trails. you know, with a bag to pick up any, any debris and they're walking through the trails. There's probably a less likelihood of contamination than if it's a, you know, free for all dog park where dogs are running around. Would you agree that perhaps if it's just access to trailway, the likelihood, even if a dog owner was not responsible and waste was left, would there be less of a chance of that scenario happen? My number one concern is the water quality at this piece of property.
Yes, I would say that that's a different type of usage and it would be a lot less likely to result in any kind of accumulation. But most dog parks, even though they may look like they're clean, there's a lot of material that gets left behind. It can't be 100% picked up. When you have the volume of dogs that you have in a, in a dog park, it's, it's just not a good fit with a water supply area.
Okay. Further to that, you know, another concern I have is the liability for the, with the town. There is a baseball diamond there. It's a place where during certain months of the spring, you have five or six, it's the rookie league. So it's very, very young kids. And I am concerned about dogs that either are not leashed or get away from a leash. You know, perhaps doing harm to some of our young kids or even adults that are around. I don't know, Mr. Dean, is, even Mr. Bisson, you're, you're on the line, maybe you'd like to weigh in. Is there a way that we could sort of avoid that potential to happen? Is there a way to sort of fence off an area where people could have access directly to the trail without having access to the fields?
Yes, currently there's parking by the boat launch that Jen had mentioned that it's a direct access to there. So I think proper signage Nico would probably help. But I think it's also education of the people. Ever since we actually finished the fencing at Gillman for the, the baseball diamond, not many people go on it. So that's the one good thing. I think it's just really, and I've read the packet as well, education and, and sending them towards the right direction. Right now, the trailhead is not even marked. So if you don't know where the trail is, you're going to be wandering that park.
And the concern too Greg, to your point, you know, there, there aren't a lot of people that, that use it, you know, outside of, you know, going to the trails or maybe, you know, going to the water during rookie league. I, I don't see how this could be policed. And if there's any, even just the slightest risk of water contamination or even the slightest risk of a liability to the town, I, I just, I just have concerns. I wanted to bring those up and again, you know, ask the board, other board members what their thoughts are. Wishes of the board. And I'm going to apologize to my board members because I have a new light on my laptop and I can't see if a physical hand is being raised. So if you have a question, just go ahead.
I did want to point out, we do have our T-ball program, the two there, right? Greg, we have it there?
Yes, thanks Russ. We do, our T-ball program is also there that we actually, most of the time now partner with Brentwood. So that's our home field, Brentwood has a home field and they travel back and forth.
And anything structural, my understanding is we have to run it. If it's, depending on the significance of what the structure is, we have to run it by the, the trust as well. If it's something, if it's something new to the site, so.
And Greg, are there any other programs? Cause I know Coyote Club used to run out of Gillman Park, my kids used to go there. So is it just baseball and softball that are?
Currently it is only baseball and softball. We would love to start a outdoor wilderness program again, if we could find an instructor.
That would be awesome.
But, but we're also building the pavilion to attract families to go down there. And eventually down the line, we'll be building a playground as well to make it a family friendly park.
So does that become part of the conversation? If, you know, will there be a sectioned off area that's primarily a dog park that's fenced in? Which, I mean, I just feel like there's more questions that need to be answered before decisions are made today. That's just my opinion, but I also see that Joanna has her hand up again. As an attendee.
Well Lovey, can I just speak on that? One of the things, when we actually get around to building a playground, the way, the location it would go, we would actually put a fence around the playground. So that would actually prevent dogs from going in the playground and
That's great.
To the chief's point, like, yeah, it specifically spells out if the, you change the ordinance that they can't go on the ball fields and the pavilion and the playground. Now the animal control officer has something to hang her hat on and say, hey, no, you're, you're in violation of the ordinance.
Well, let's be honest, dogs probably listen better than kids sometimes. That's it Joe.
Bob, Bob, could you let Joanna back in? Joanna Pellerin?
Hello?
Hi Joanna.
Hi, thank you for giving me a second try at this. I, I've been listening intently and I understand that many, many people are worried about a dog park that is expressly not permitted under your conservation easement.
No, that's not what we're worried about. We're worried about any dog waste that's unattended. Where, there's, I don't think that a dog park is on the table.
Good, but I hear so many people referring to it. So I want you to know, we'll not permit that. So you're safe on that account.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Joanna.
You're welcome.
But Selectwoman Cowan, I, I agree with you. I, you know, whatever we call it, there's, there's still those two concerns that I have. So Selectwoman Gillman, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of my concerns and, and maybe this isn't one, is that if we open up the Gillman Park for access to dogs, whether it's pass through or, or playing, but not a dog park. What, when are going to, what are going to be the next parks that people request? I know we have some protection here because there is a history and it's a documented history. My, my only concern is that the documentation is not as, I think it should be a little more clear. That we only have a draft of this and a mention of that, you know? So that's my concern is, is setting a precedent. Can we rely on the information that we have in this packet to say, no, this only one?
Right. And that's a good point. Mr. Dean, what are the, what are the chances that if we do a little bit more digging, we can come up with something a little bit more? Instead of a draft, something that's more complete or legal or signed or whatnot?
Well, I, I was able to locate one other thing so far. That is a, a draft of a lease agreement, which talks about, and again, this, this predates the transfer of the property. I haven't found a signed version, but presuming one exists. It, it doesn't necessarily address dogs specifically, but what it says is that there is agreement between the town, the town, the Parks and Rec Department, essentially, I think, the director specifically and the Gillman Park trustees to review an annual plan of activities for the park. But that's the most I've been able to find. There's nothing that speaks specifically to dogs and this issue, other than what you have in the packet, at least so far.
Okay.
That was 2004, I believe.
2004. Would the board be more comfortable tabling this discussion then until Mr. Dean and staff have an opportunity to scour the archives for some additional documentation?
I'd say so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, motion to table?
A second.
A motion to table and a second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan, aye. Selectwoman Roundtree O'Leary?
Aye.
Selectwoman Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, it's tabled. Mr. Dean, maybe within the next couple of meetings, we can return this to the agenda with whatever additional information you can come up with.
Yes, and I know we had a couple, we had two former trustees tonight on with us with public comment and I just invite them to submit anything they have further, please feel.
Yes, please do. Excellent, excellent.
We'd love to know more.
Thank you. And thank you all who participated in public comment this evening. Next on our discussion items, we have our COVID-19 update that we get from Mr. Dean and other department heads. Tonight, we're going to start off with the Recreation Department. We have Greg Bisson and Melissa Roy, who are going to give us an update on summer camp discussions that they've had, research that they've done and presumably recommendations that they may have for the select board to consider for this summer's, summer camp. So with that, I'll turn it over to you Melissa and Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, as you all know, we've been very busy over in Parks and Rec researching and developing a summer option. I wouldn't call it a summer camp per se that we're proposing, even though in the draft you might have gotten, it does say summer camp. It's more of a, a childcare resource that we're proposing. One of the things that, since COVID-19 came out, the, the restrictions that have been put on summer camps per se is very, very strict. And that, to the point, we, we feel that we can offer something that is smaller in size, but not the summer camp of 2019. That is definitely something. Unfortunately, the ACA just released their recommendations last night. So we're still combing through the 100 page document that they have worked with the CDC on developing. But there are some things that we, we hit home because we had seen drafts. So one of the things that we are, we would be recommending is turning our bathrooms at the, at the pool house into unisex bathrooms and assigning group specific stalls. From anything to keep them in groups of 10. And there's a few other things that we are really proposing to try to keep them safe, temperature checks. They have to actually, the campers need to create a log two weeks prior to taking their temperatures and that they submit to us and then we'll keep a log when they start attending camp. I mean, the ACA definitely thought was thorough, but we feel that if it's the Parks and Rec and one of the ways that we can help the community to help the economy start back up. We've heard a lot of people need childcare. And that's one of the things I think we can provide is that option for them. We did a follow-up survey that really kind of opened it. Cause of course with these new restrictions come added costs and our camp being very frugal, it was going to be impossible to run any type of childcare that we could, under the circumstances and the price. So we came back and we had developed a budget and I believe you all have the budget in front of you. We're not looking to make money, we're, we're looking to provide a service to the community. And that's where we really dug down deep and, and worked it out to the point where I think with everything, we can provide that opportunity to those people.
Okay. Well, I think first and foremost, you know, the safe, safety and wellbeing and the health of our kids, of your staff members and you and Melissa and Dave, I mean, that's, that's priority. I, I am an advocate, as anybody knows, of the wrecking park department and the summer camp. And I thought your survey was, was good and I liked the response that you got. And, and when you reported to us a couple of weeks ago, we asked you to go back and ask the people who were, were favorable for continuing what they thought about the increased cost. Even if you were to modify camp, we all know it's not going to be, you know, the, the camp of old, at least in 2020. But even if you were to modify it, I, I just, I don't know how you would do it. And I know you would try everything possible. I just don't know how you, we could, we could ensure everybody's safety and wellbeing and also allow the kids to have fun. You know, planted playground is off the table. Correct me if I'm wrong. The pool could be on the table, but with some distancing, camp kids only. And we saw what that added cost was. And you know, it all of a sudden makes, you know, a very affordable, well-done camp, not so affordable and probably not what the kids want. So I, I like the idea that you've, that you're doing your due diligence though, to not try to create a summer camp, taking that word off the table. But perhaps looking at some of the folks in town, I know that there are some other resources that are offering things for, for kids this summer. But I applaud you for doing your due diligence to help these folks out who are going to be going back to work or who may be already working and need a place for their kids to go. The kids have been out of school since March. You know, on the, the pro side of things psychologically for these kids puts them, slowly puts them back into a social setting. However, I still have my concerns about how you can pull off making something safe and healthy. So I, I'd like to hear more, I guess maybe, and I'd like to hear from the board members as well and hear their thoughts. But I, I think that maybe this needs to be done in two tiers, that just deciding whether or not we're going to have a summer camp or not. And if not, you know, deciding that the folks get refunded and then reaching out somehow, whether it be through a survey or I don't know how you would do that, you could advise us to that. But reaching out to those folks that need something and then how you would go about putting that together and coming up with a cost and, and all of that. So you understand, I see it as two tiers. Let's make the decision on summer camp and then move on, what else can we offer? Any other thoughts from, from any of the other board members, comments?
Nico, I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I personally think that psychologically, we need something for the kids. I think they've done the best that they can, considering the circumstances. And it's, it's kind of time for them to re-enter the social world. I am concerned about parents who don't have any options. And so that would be my first priority if we were going to go that method. So if you're in a, you know, two parent, one parent working home, then my gut says that that has priority over parents who perhaps have the option to stay home. I know that's making assumptions for people, but you know, when it comes down to it as a town, I think we need to start looking at things for helping those who need the help the most. Obviously first responders, people who work in industries where they are necessary, people who've given back and done the most that they can to provide us with all the things that we've needed, supermarkets, postal service, all of that stuff. So I mean, that's one thing to consider when it comes to whether or not we have camp. That's a decision that obviously Greg, you know, you and your team have to make. I also don't know how many people have rescinded their camp registrations as of yet. Have you had a lot of people who are, who have already said that they're not going to send their kids, even if there is camp?
We actually only have had a few handful, but that's loving, it's
That's indicative of
They're waiting, they're waiting to hear from the board and from the governor. The governor's task force today briefly, for two minutes talked about day camps.
Yeah.
And I think they're waiting for more guidance as well. I know we had submitted something for our state association, as I mentioned last meeting. That actually has gone to DHHS to review, to go back to the task force. So there's a lot of hoops to still jump through.
Yeah, I think that's indicative of the pulse of where everyone is and what they're wanting. So, yeah.
One, one of the suggestions I'll make, I know Melissa's got her hand up, but one of the things I just wanted to point out is, and this is happening in a lot of different areas that are similar to this, is refunding everyone and starting again from more of a ground zero approach of how many kids can you accommodate? And how many would you take in? Because one of the things a proposal talks about is 50 to 110. Because one of the things the proposal talks about is 50 to 110 as a potential amount, and we have over 340 registered right now. So, and that's with the restrictions that you see in the packet, the 50 to 110. So it adds to the complexities that we're talking about.
Is that including, do we have financial aid? Do we do reduced costs? Everybody pays the same amount, or?
Every, everyone pays the same amount, unfortunately, because it is self-funded.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing we offer is a payment plan, so people can spread it out. The one thing that Melissa, David, and I have all talked about is really, we've whittled it down, 50 is the most comfortable that we are offering, with some limitations, of course, like teen camp is off the table, because those are kids that might have aged out of our summer camp, but are sometimes old enough to stay home, so that, to get them off the table. And so now you whittled it down by 40 of those kids. And then you really look at the different numbers, and what we did survey when we put it back out the second time, what we'd be willing to pay. We're comfortable with that number, for that would be the cost of a seven-week summer camp. So it was $283 additionally on there, which we could definitely make it work. The budget's very thin, of course, as you can see, and I think it's a $326 net profit. But other than that, it's really keeping the groups to even numbers. Like, we talked about 50 kids, so it's really 12.5 kids, if I'm doing my mouth right, per group. You got first and second grade, third and fourth, fifth, and sixth and seventh. With sixth and seventh, just to give you a snapshot, that is our largest summer camp group with 120 kids registered. And right now, 14 of those are interested in some kind of childcare.
So Greg, thank you. Melissa, I'd like to hear from you in a second. I just want to reiterate that, you know, Select Woman Rountree Olaf and I were saying that, you know, again, you start with summer camp, as we have it with 300-some-odd kids. We need to make a decision, again, that's the first decision. Are we having it or are we not? And if we decide that we are not, we refund that money. And then whatever it is that you're going to have, and I think Melissa's going to fill in the blanks here in a second, whatever you're going to have, I don't think, you, we can't call it camp. And I have a feeling, but I agree with Select Woman Rountree Olaf, that the priority needs to be for the folks who are back to work or going back to work, who really need us as a town to step up and help them, you know, place their kids in a safe place. And Melissa, I have a feeling you're not only going to fill in the blanks here, but I bet you have a name for it.
We do have a name for it, but I wanted to talk to you a little bit first, go back to the summer camp piece, since we're talking about it in two different tiers. So Greg, David, and I have worked really hard, and we've talked through all of the regulations. There was a leaked document a few weeks ago from CDC that were very stringent. We looked at that, we've looked at the ACA regulations. The governor from New Hampshire has not released his regulations yet, and we're expecting those in a few weeks. But I think we all feel pretty strongly that the 300-person summer camp, we're just not able to do that safely with the facilities that we have and the current setup of our program. It isn't possible. So in order to reframe what people are thinking about for this summer, I think the process would be to say, you know what, we can't offer summer adventure camp this summer, but what we can offer is this 50-person program that meets all of the guidelines that are being recommended currently, and what we can do is look at what the governor suggests in the upcoming weeks. It would be groups of 10, they would not be, excuse me, interacting with each other, they would be having the same counselor, the staff ratios would be appropriate, like Greg said, the facilities would be appropriate, hand washing, all of these things, because there are people providing emergency daycare. And we are able to provide a safe environment for these 50 kids, but we really can't take more than that because of what happens if it rains, and being able to provide those services to the best of our abilities. So we would like to present a program, like I said, for the 50 kids called CARES Kids. We want people to understand that this isn't summer camp. It's going to be fun, we're going to do the very best that we can, but what we can do in this scenario of 2020 is provide alternative programming. And this is the alternative programming that we're suggesting. It is different than camp. You know, at camp, we have an amazing time, and we'll have a great time at this, but it's different. We would have to notify the parents of the schedule, what the requirements would be, what changes there would be, so everybody could go into this program full well knowing what they're signing up for and how it is different. I do agree with Lovey, and we've had some conversations, and we haven't completely flushed out how we would provide preference to families, whether that's a lottery system, whether that's people give, like Lovey said, what their jobs are, or how many working parents are at their home. We would have, we would need a little bit of time to work that out. But we feel really strongly that at Parks and Rec, we can provide something for the community, we just can't provide this big, huge summer camp with the current recommendations. Greg, would you agree?
Yes, 100%. And having to worry, because Melissa and I both have children, knowing how precious this is and how to deal with it, I think, to us, it hit home more because of really what we are experiencing as well, and knowing that if I could find a childcare option for my daughter right now, I would.
So one of the things we feel really strongly about is providing the community with opportunities for these children to socialize in a safe environment and in a safe way. And when I say mental health, I don't mean mental health as in counseling. I mean, these kids have been stuck in the house potentially for months on end, and we don't know what the requirements are going to be in July and August. And maybe by the end of the program, we can do big groups of games of soccer. We really don't know. We think social distancing is going to be with us for a while. But how wonderful would it be if 50 of the kids got to do that this summer and their parents were able to work? If the goal of the New Hampshire task force is to get some of the economy back going, kids need to go somewhere. Whether the town decides to take that risk on or not is the Select Board's decision. But I do think we've worked really hard and been very specific about what we can do and what we can't do, and really looked at a lot of options. And this is something we feel very strongly that we would be able to provide safely if given the opportunity.
Select Woman Gilman, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Being the elder statesperson here, I have to say, I'm going to listen to all of you who have the young children because you're living through this. I had the luxury of having my kids during normal times. Not that twins are normal, but I was just wondering if the idea of calling it a program or whatever you want to call it is fine, but what you're looking at is for a constant number of the same children, or that's what you're looking at, rather?
Yes. It would be the same 50 kids for seven weeks. We would be proposing that the program start June 29th and run for seven weeks. We would have the Friday before Fourth of July off. The same 10 kids would be with the same counselor as much as possible. And when we say as much as possible, it would just mean like if the counselor had a day off or was out sick. And what we've built into the budget is backup. So for example, if the grade one and two counselor was out, there's a specified backup that would then come in. So the reason we're doing that is when we work with James from Health, and when we look at the CDC guidelines and we look at ACA, we know that we need to keep these groups as small and as tight as possible, so that, let's say, heaven forbid, there is a positive case, then we can say, this group didn't have any interactions with anyone else, and we can deal with this group as a whole. And the camp may need to be shut down for a day for cleaning, but it wouldn't need to be shut down for two weeks, because this group has been, these groups are isolated. They're going to have their own places to put their belongings, their own schedule, so that nobody is coming in contact with each other, their own stall in the bathroom, you know, all of these things, because that is what's, for what we can see, Greg and I and David have been on national webinars and national calls throughout the entire last, what, four or five weeks? And that seems to be the most important part, is the risk level to the kids in contact with a number of kids and number of adults. So we want to keep that really small.
Sure. So here's an odd question. And I hate them, but I know they're necessary. Have we thought about porta-potties as an additional option for giving more bathroom choices outside of the limited bathroom spaces in, at the pool?
Yeah, harder to clean. That's one of the things, it's strange where some of the regulations I've read are, and a lot of parks and recs around the country are going away from porta-potties, because we only have a company that comes in once a week and clean it. We can control who uses it, of course, by padlocks, but I would feel more comfortable using the bathrooms where we, it's our lock and key, it's our staff and a contractor cleaning it nightly, and our staff cleaning it daily during, in between different groups.
Fun times. I do not envy you, but I am excited to hear about the plan, and it, you know, all things considered, does sound feasible and great and would be a great service to the town.
One other thing I would like to say is that we understand that the people providing emergency childcare, those families have decided there's a small amount of inherent risk that they need to take in order to go to work. We're going to minimize that risk as, to the best of our ability, and follow all the guidelines and all the rules. And that risk is not going to be okay for every family. That is going to have to be a decision of the people that register. When we did the survey, we had 38 people say they definitely want to be at camp, their families need to be at camp and want to be at camp. We would need 50 people to register to run the program, to make it financially feasible. We had a lot of people that said maybe, and I think once we were to outline what the program is and what we would be doing, I think we'd be able to get up to our 50 number. But there's no way to erase all of the risks. But that's, I think that would be the best that we could do, as long as we're following what our insurance says that we need to do and all of the guidelines provided, because like I said, the kids need to do something and go somewhere for those families that don't have another choice.
And one thing, our Primmex is reviewing the ACA recommendations as well. They were going to wait for the governor, and they will review the governor's recommendations once they come out. But the one thing that they can base it on, because the task force will base it off the ACA recommendations as well, so it's a whole domino effect where, at least to see if they're comfortable in running it. And just to tell you how needed this is, I've gotten several emails and phone calls from families still without a summer childcare option, wondering if we're still running summer camp and had availability. So the need is out there.
Another thing I know for any camp families that are watching, if we cancel camp, right, that we're talking about, I know there's a concern about priority registration, and we will figure that out, so don't worry. I don't want, we don't want anyone to panic. We will make sure that the people that were in camp will figure something out, whatever that is. It won't go unnoticed, and we will come up with a solution. I just don't have it, we don't have it for you tonight.
Thank you, Melissa, and I know you will. Just the mechanism that you came up with this year was so seamless and worked very well. So I'm confident that for families who want to return to camp in 2021, that the Rec Department will come up with a way to register. And Greg, to your point, I think you're going to find too, you know, even if you don't get your number to 50 right away, you may have families that have never participated in the rec camp come to you for the first time to utilize this option. So Select Woman Gilman, do you have another question?
Yes, I did. This is going away from our details, which I'm really glad, the line that Greg and Melissa are taking. I just wondered, who is representing your industry on the task force calls? Is it different people when they talk about it, or is it the same one person?
A little backstory, so Chris Edmonds, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Central New Hampshire, is representing the task force. And it was only discovered a couple of weeks ago that they didn't have a working group for the task force to talk about summer camps. After discussing it, and Chris did a phenomenal presentation, which was a little, was great, but then they forgot about it for a week. They put the task force working group together, and we had a representation from our state association. And I'm proud to say Parks and Rec is on top of things, because when the work group got together on that Saturday two weeks ago, New Hampshire Parks and Recreation was the only association or affiliation that came to the table with written recommendations. Everyone else was just like, I don't know what we're going to do, let's just wait. So we were pretty confident that we put together a pretty good plan, and now, and that's where it's a little unusual, where our recommendations got forwarded to DHHS, and then there was a representative on the task force that decided to start distributing our recommendations from the New Hampshire Parks and Recreation, to the point where NHMA reached out to our state association, say, hey, can we get a copy of these recommendations? Because honestly, we haven't seen them yet. So that's where we are now.
That's another question for the task force, but congratulations, I'm glad this is, you know, you're doing a great job there.
Two things that I would like to mention about the new program, that CARE Kids program that we're talking about proposing, two pretty important items would be necessary for us to be able to go forward. These families, if they're doing this program, need care during rain days. In order to provide that, what we'd like to propose is, early in the morning, we would make a decision on if it was a rain day, they would then be dropped off at two different locations. They would be assigned a location the families would know in advance. One would be the Parks and Rec Department. We have three rooms where we would take 30 of the kids. We would like to book access to the town hall for the other 20 children for the seven weeks of the program. We know that's very unusual. We don't plan to ask for the town hall pretty much on any other summer. These are very extraordinary scenario, but in order to provide the six-foot distancing that we would ask for the children, we would need a secondary space, and the schools are not able to provide that for us because they've been shut down. So that's number one. And number two, in the guidelines for the American Camping Association, it asks that your camp not have visitors on the premises. So we're going to do pickup and drop-off staggered at different times, as well as having parents drop off in the parking lot. But right now, our park is open to the public, and we would love for the Select Board to consider during camp hours from 8:00 to 4:00, if the park could be closed for visiting groups or people, so that we could provide safety to the kids participating in the CARE Kids program.
Presently, right now, it's closed, correct?
No, the park is actually.
The park's open?
The tennis court is closed, the playground is closed, the tennis courts and basketball courts are closed.
Okay. Mr. Dean, what are your thoughts on whether we can legally do that?
Legally do which piece?
Close the park to the public from 8:00 to 4:00, other than the.
Well, I think we need a mechanism to be able to do that. I think the board could probably make that determination if it needed to for particular public health and safety reasons, if this wouldn't qualify for that, so.
For a finite period of time.
For a finite period of time.
Also, the pool will be closed, the playground is not allowed to be open from federal guidelines, I think, until phase three or four. So the only thing people would be coming up to access potentially would be the tennis courts or the fields. Just for background, those other two things potentially could be closed.
Select Woman Gilman, do you have your hand up?
Yes. When talking about, when Russ mentioned that we could maybe come up with something ourselves, it just reminds me of the phrase that I constantly hear from the task force, or, excuse me, whoever is speaking from the podium, that the federal government supports, the state government manages, and the local government executes. So this is one of those times when I think we can execute.
I agree. I agree. One question about the town hall, Melissa. Um, one question about the town hall, Melissa, um, you feel that will be big enough for for twenty kids to be at a safe space, number one, and number two? Um, the, to be in there all day during a rainy day, um, you think it'll be cool enough on a hot day or muggy day?
Sure. So we would have to make the decision early in the morning, just because we are uncomfortable providing busing um, due to the current guidelines. But town hall is is within walking distance to both Swayze Parkway and Townhouse Common. So the goal would actually be to be outside as much as possible. So most of the time in the summer, you don't get a full rainy day. Now, that being said, it's gonna jinx me and we're gonna have like six. But usually, it's a passing storm or hear that or whatever. So the goal would be for us to maybe walk to Swayze, walk to Townhouse for a little bit, get the kids outside, um, be able to do those things. I do think the town hall would be able to provide those things. Um, on rain days, we typically do arts and crafts or movies, some quieter things. One thing that would change is, according to the ACA guidelines, which is the American Camping Association, staff and children don't have to wear masks as long as they keep a six foot distance. We plan to keep those recommendations in place when we're outdoors, because we feel that the staff and the kids can do that. Um, unless they're getting first aid care or something like that, when we would put masks on. Um, when we're indoors for a rain date, we would have the staff and the kids wear masks only for those rain days. And we would make sure that the kids are comfortable. We would talk with any of the parents um, and explain to them, it would just be on those indoor rain days because we're we're inside and not outside. So we want to make the the families and the kids and the staff as safe as possible. We think we can do that when we're outside. Uh, we wanted to take an extra precaution inside.
Okay. And Melissa, in uh, in addition to the camp cares, which would be, you know, the the daycare for um, for parents who need a place for their children to go. Um, for those campers that may be able to stay at home for the summer, I know there are certain neighborhoods, um, a lot of neighborhoods actually that are getting very creative uh, with with multiple neighbors getting together in a safe social distancing, doing uh, sidewalk art or art in their own driveways, um, scavenger hunts, uh, there's been a lot of creative ideas. Would would the rec department with additional staff that you would hire as camp counselors have the wherewithal to maybe pick a neighborhood once or twice a week to say, we're gonna come do this for an hour or two, um, just again to open up that social um, um, setting for the kids who have been isolated for so many months?
So actually, you took the words out of Greg and I's mouth. We worked um, this, the last week or two on alternative ideas that we can provide. So in what you're talking about, our idea was to take the recreation van um, and deck it all out, decorate it, fill it full of arts and crafts and chalk and sports supply, whatever we deem is appropriate. And set up a schedule weekly where such and such a neighborhood can know Tuesdays uh, two o'clock, the rec van is gonna come and there maybe we may have music going. We may do a sidewalk chalk contest or maybe some crafts or whatever we can do that's socially distance appropriate. Um, I've seen some games where you make straps on hula hoops, um, so that the kids have like a a zone around them and you do some things. Um, but just providing something fun where we're coming to the neighborhood. Uh, we feel that would be really uplifting and and a great time and and just make it fun. We, Greg and David and I have been working tirelessly um, on maybe some weekly weekly programs, whether that's uh, arts and crafts or sports or some of those things. So once we get a handle, and I'll let Greg talk, but once we get a handle on what the board would like us to, our summer to look like, then we can kind of fill in the pieces. If we're um, completely offering no programs, maybe more weekly stuff, more community events, more of the traveling van, mobile rec department or or some sort of balance between the two. Any other feedback, Greg?
I love that.
Roll rolling recreation is uh, a throwback to the nineteen seventies where Parks and Recs went out to neighborhoods, and I think that's something that we're looking for. Uh, when we had a meeting with Russ on Friday and I, we came, I came up with a socially distancing uh, playgroups and then it morphed into, well, let's go back old school to rolling recreation. That way, they, the the parents can feel comfortable, like if they're working inside their house and now we're in the neighborhood uh, doing these recreational activities right in their neighborhood and and they're they're close to home. So if they need bathrooms or if they need, they scraped their knee, they can, the parents are close by.
Right, right.
That's a great idea. I love that, guys. And it just keeps also the kids active, like they did yoga, you know, traveling yoga, traveling zumba classes. I imagine there are a lot of uh, people who would jump literally on board the traveling van to to help out with that. Well done.
Thanks, thank you both. I mean, that's that sounds very creative. Um, so I think for for an action item, uh, as a board, we need to, we need to make a decision. Um, it it sounds like the appetite of the board is to formally cancel the summer rec camp, summer teen camp and refund um, folks their money. Uh, and then also um, discuss whether uh, we have a comfort level now for camp cares or do we want Greg and Melissa to come back on June first with a more definitive um, outline before we offer it to folks? I know time is starting to tick, so um, you know, I would, I would be open to discussing the possibility of letting Greg and Melissa run with that camp cares from now with a report back to us, but at least start the ball, but I'll throw that out to the rest of the board to discuss.
I, so I agree. Um, one of the things that I'm also really worried about is that unemployment is gonna stop for people whose jobs have opened up, who then choose not to go back. So that's something that I think about a lot. Um, I know, you know, I feel very lucky, like my, my work is mostly from home anyway, so I'm gonna keep my children at home because that's based on my comfort level. Um, but I know that for a lot of people that there, there is no other choice. There is no other option.
Right.
Um, and so I would be very interested in moving forward with however we can do this safely with the understanding that these are, you know, really, we're in very flexible times and we have to be flexible with what we with what our um, our offer is, because you know, there are news reports every day about how children are being affected differently by the coronavirus than adults. And you know, that's definitely on my mind. I'm sure you all are taking this into consideration um, as well. However, you know, there are people who don't have an option and what, and and how can we do this safely?
Agreed. So do we um, Mr. Dean, I don't think, yeah, oh, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna, I was just gonna double back to what you were saying earlier and I think they've set up a great plan and I'm I'm all for it. And I trust that they will create the safest options for our families in town, so.
Okay. Mr. Dean, I've never canceled rec camp before. Do we need to make a a motion uh, for the board to formally uh, cancel and authorize the rec department to refund the money? I would think we would.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time then.
Mr. Chair, I move to cancel the Exeter Parks and Recreation Department's summer program camp um, and refund the um, and refund the costs or, what are they? Fees. Camp fees to the uh, those who signed up.
For the year twenty twenty?
For the year twenty twenty, thank you.
We have a motion on the table?
All second, I'm feeling really emotional.
Yeah, I just didn't want to be the one to shut down camp and so I'm sorry, Julie and Molly.
No problem, no problem. That's my role.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, um, though it breaks all our hearts, um, it's for their, it's for their well-being. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Cowan, aye. Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olick?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Ms. Clerk says aye. Regrets.
And one thing, Mr. Chair, uh,
Yes.
We're actually gonna be looking if to refund everyone via check. Uh, a lot of people use their credit cards, but we cannot absorb the exorbitant fees associated with refunding those to their back of their card, so uh, please, parents that are watching, bear with us as we work with the finance department to do it via check.
Okay. Greg, may I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm done.
Okay. If I may, um, and I know you're not going to come up with something immediately, um, but when you're, when you're approaching folks about refunding their money, if you could also, just for good PR, let them know that you will, you and Melissa will be working on plans for registration for twenty twenty one and that if they were registered for this year, you're going to find a mechanism by which they will be able to seamlessly register for next year. I think that that would be a great public relations move, if you could do that in good faith uh, to these folks that are um, having to explain to their kids that they can't go to camp.
Most likely, it'll be similar to what we did previously, so we're gonna keep track of everyone that's registered. Uh, be able to email out to them and get that information to them, so they can almost do a pre-registration like they did this past year.
Yeah, I get that, but if we could communicate that now, that we are gonna work on something, I think that will go a long way with the with the folks.
One hundred percent.
Great, thanks. Are we, are we comfortable authorizing um, the Parks and Rec Department now to continue working on the, um, what'd you call it, care, kids care?
Care, Care Kids.
Care Kids, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure we need to do that, because that's kind of in their purview.
That's one less roll call. Um, I I applaud the work that you've done and you've really done this um, on the run and you've kept up with everything. It's, everything changes every day, um, and you both have done spectacular jobs. So I know the board's gonna look forward to maybe hearing an update on June first.
Yes, one hundred percent. And uh, we are gonna reach out uh, and and start gathering the data. I think we have a lot of it. We asked our last survey if they were quote unquote essential workers, if both parents worked outside the house. So we have that data, so we can start working on that and then we'll we'll throw it out there and see if uh, registrations start coming in.
Great.
I would also like to say that we didn't take this lightly. This is a really, really hard decision that we have been
Of course.
agonizing over, um, and we're gonna be, the staff is gonna be devastated, you know, it's a, an awful thing, but we had to put safety first.
Absolutely. Thank you both.
Thank you. Do you want to discuss the rest of the summer?
Or your other programs?
Uh, there's some other things that you might have seen, uh, especially, I mean, we have fireworks that I think uh, Russ mentioned is something that in this day and age, that fireworks definitely cannot happen. That's, that's something, uh, but one of the things with the summer concert series is maybe pivoting it to a drive-in concert series and maybe allocating some of, some funds towards movies, uh, to do drive-in movies. Uh, we've worked with Exeter TV and Bob and we actually do have now a radio transmitter that is outstanding, that can transmit about uh, two hundred yards, I believe Bob said, and uh, we we've talked with a location on Epping Road, uh, we're finalizing that details where we could, uh, people would register, pre-register to come in. Uh, that way we can properly space them in their cars. They can enjoy a concert and or a movie and uh, have a good time. And especially Tupelo uh, Music Hall in Derry just did it and the Washington Post applauded them because it was a packed house. Uh, everyone's socially distancing in their car and having a good time, listening to live music for the first time in months.
That sounds like a good idea. Um, you know, again, I think that as uh, as the summer progresses, we may see, you know, the governor eased restrictions, but I think for now, we need to, you need to look into the summer with what we have. Um, but you know, if you're talking about um, you know, something like they did in Derry with the concert, I mean, you know, I would also um, reach out to, you know, some of our other locals, um, you know, who are musicians that may be willing to participate or maybe to, in the spirit of um, giving locals, you know, some business. I would encourage you to think of that.
Oh, one hundred percent. We we try to, we try to go towards a local feel for musicians. And then once that, uh, whoever applies, then it goes, broadens out.
Okay, good.
So well, you you know, a lot of this has been predicated, obviously, on the public gathering uh, rules that are currently, so uh, we'll have to see, but I I would agree with everything that's been said so far. It's like, when you think about our normal summer schedule with the AIM Festival, the fireworks, the brass band, we're really looking at pushing those things out. Uh, and we're modifying them, uh, but but going under the auspice that we can't really do them the way we normally do them, so.
Right, right.
It's, it's, it's kind of like saying canceling without officially canceling, but we need to understand that the likelihood is is very slim, uh, that we could do any of these things at this point.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, Greg, do you have anything else for us?
Uh, I'm just looking at my memo that we sent, uh, drive-in movies, concert, uh, we briefly touched on the pool, just for anyone that didn't catch up, the uh, the CDC guidelines for the pool would have been too stringent. We rely on uh, summer camp swim lessons and uh, daily fees and concessions to actually pay for the pool. Uh, and without any of those really, and trying to keep six feet distance in the water and temperature checks going into the pool and it was, it would be very difficult uh, to keep with the standards and the regulations that are put out there, so that is something that uh, we didn't take lightly, because of course we're gonna pump down the pool and leave it empty for the summer, unfortunately, and that's, that's a sad part as well, because uh, that's been a joy for kids since forever, nineteen seventies. So that's, that's something we don't really like to do, uh, but that's, that's about it for us.
Okay. One comment, I, last comment I have, um, you know, with the senior center being closed, and this isn't something for discussion now, but I would, I would request that if you haven't already, um, maybe focusing uh, some effort on programs that you may be able to do, um, with a social distancing for seniors. Whether, whether it be virtual or, I don't, I mean, you're the experts, you'll have to work that out, but I would, I would love to be able to include them in some activities as well, because I know they're, they're pretty isolated right now as well.
Melissa was definitely working on a couple of things. She's been keeping in contact with the seniors uh, via phone, but I think even seeing a friendly face, even social distancing, if we have an opportunity, we can go out there and do one-on-one checks and and check on the well-being of them and uh, get them, if they feel comfortable to get out. Like maybe we start our walking program on Swayze that maybe without a comfort or a familiar face, they don't feel comfortable venturing out on Swayze Parkway, so maybe we take them down and block them uh, there as well. So uh, that's something that we're definitely focusing on, because that is a population that we're talking about summer camp being canceled, but these seniors, uh, and some of them that Melissa and I got familiar with, haven't left their apartment in two months.
Well, I think unfortunately, some, some are unable to just because of where they live, but I know you'll work on that. Um, so, so thank you. We have two board members with questions. Uh, Selectwoman Gilman was first and then Selectman Brown?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't have a question. I have more like maybe some ideas. Uh, my experience going over to the nursing home to visit my mom on her birthday, holding up signs. Um, may be an activity that both the the younger people and the older people can enjoy. So making signs for the younger people, traveling over to the like two twenty-seven Water Street and saying hello. But they have to be big letters, because you can't get that close.
Right.
So one of the, one of the things we were talking about was having people be able to sign up for celebrations, like, like you're saying, hold up signs. Um, having people sign up maybe for me to come, talk to them through a window and I'm in their front yard or on their porch or just having some sort of interaction, maybe um, some grocery programs or for those that are comfortable with virtual or even just old school conference calls with three or four of their friends, helping, letting me help them kind of set that up for them. Um, and a bunch of other things, but maybe some topic groups, you know, different things like that. But uh, just trying to to get some more communication and connection within that group right now.
Good, thank you.
Selectman Brown?
Including sub-items, we have nine more things on the agenda, so not to sound callous, but could we either have an intermission or something else?
Thanks. Are you, are you asking to recess for a couple of minutes?
Could we?
Yes.
Like just two minutes?
Madam Clerk, remind me, the protocol, do we have to have a motion or can I just recess it for, for two or three minutes? Julie?
You're muted, Julie.
I'm nervous about other noises behind me, but, um, I think I can, we can do it by consensus.
Because I only remember seeing the board do this once before and it was years ago and I don't remember how you did it.
Well, let's vote just to make it, you know.
I feel like this conversation would have been the break. Okay.
We have a motion in a second to recess for five minutes.
Uh, Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Woman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
And Clerk says aye.
We're recessed at 9:07, we'll return at 9:12. Thank you.
Thank you.
So something went wrong with my screen here.
Does it only show you?
It shows, I can see you, uh, Selectman Brown and me.
I can see you.
Yeah.
It, it might be because I'm sharing, uh, image screen
Oh, okay.
right now. So it probably went to full screen for you. Just so the viewers at home, uh, they right now have, uh, a big picture.
Virtual town meetings, okay.
Well, we'll plan on, uh, editing in like a little recess.
Okay.
Notification on the right side for future meetings if needed. So that way it doesn't have to show you guys on camera if you're, uh, walking away or, or whatnot.
I can't see if everybody, do we have the board back?
Selectwoman Gilman is here.
Okay.
Roundtree Olaf is here.
Okay.
Selectman Brown is here.
Molly.
Selectwoman Cowan? Bobby, you're there. Okay, Bobby, you're going to do something where the screen's going to go back to what we received. There we go. Okay, the board is back. Okay. Call the meeting back to order from our recess. We'll do another roll call. Uh, Selectwoman Cowan?
Here.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Sorry, I'm here.
It's okay. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Here.
And Selectman Brown?
Here.
Mr. Dean, I see you're back. Okay.
I am.
Call the meeting back to order. Uh, we left off, um, with the rec department. Uh, Mr. Dean, are you ready to continue with the COVID-19 update? Uh, update us on, um?
Yeah, I, I know the hour's getting late, so I wasn't going to, uh, be exhaustive, but I just wanted to allude to a couple of things real quick. One is that I was able to attend, um, a meeting of the Down Easter last week, the steering committee. And they are definitely discussing, uh, coming back live with one trip north and one trip south is my understanding. And I included in the pack a news release that you can see from Amtrak regarding what steps they're going to, they're planning on taking and how they're going to handle that. So there'll be more to come on that one, that particular issue, but it is, it is definitely being worked on. It would also include some signage at our local station here in town. So we're in touch with Bob Hall and so forth, and that's being worked on. The other, um, item is really funding related. Um, it obviously goes without saying, spending a lot of my time listening to task force meetings, uh, looking at the stay-at-home orders and facilitating those items with the departments where it involves us. And obviously there are a lot of guidelines. Uh, one of the big ones obviously is the retail establishments that have been allowed to be open since May 11th, um, with conditions. And so one of the things that we're beginning to see is, as, uh, Darren and I were talking about today, one of the things we're beginning to see is sort of this self-selection process where if you're walking around, some retail establishments are open, some are not by their own volition, but we expect that to just be a work in progress as things continue. So, uh, there's that. And then the other big things are just staying on top of all of the funding pieces. Uh, later on, I'll be asking the board to approve the Gopher agreement to submit to the state so we can begin to put together the dollars. And we have access to $362,000. And hopefully we can, uh, we feel pretty confident that we can tap into most, if not all of that money. So that should help us out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Chief Wilking, I'll turn it over to you for an update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just had a quick offline with the manager and I just want to keep it brief. I know it's getting late. Uh, I do want to commend the town of Exeter and, and our great residents for an awesome job and staying safe. We, uh, went an entire week without, and, without a new case of, of COVID in Exeter. Uh, the weekend, there were two new positives. But it's, uh, but it's, they've been an awesome stretch. So keep up the good work. Uh, keep, uh, what do they say? You know, you're foot on the gas pedal and keep it going. Cause this is the long haul. Uh, I'm just going to stay on the line in case there's any questions on, uh, any of the issues of downtown dining and, and Gopher and things like that. The manager's just alluded to the fact, uh, that the money's available. Uh, I had a discussion with emergency management this morning and it seems like at a stopgap, if, uh, the town does not have enough funds to justify the entire amount, um, fire EMS and public health salaries in their entirety can go toward that. So I don't think the town will have a problem, uh, justifying the entire 362, but what'll follow when you work on that agreement. But I'm just going to hang on the line and if you have anything further, I'll be there to answer questions.
There any questions for the chief this time? Uh, Selectwoman Gilman?
Okay, thank you. Um, but my question is about, uh, businesses and restaurants and the things that are starting to reopen can get, there, can get masks and gloves and what have you, uh, from the state. And I was just wondering if that's not, if, if the state runs out, um, there's no guarantee that they'll be able to, probably everyone, um, will we be able to do that as, as, and use part of that money to do that kind of thing?
Uh, I would, I would say we'll certainly be able to facilitate that. I know, uh, I had, uh, James reach out to the state late last week. Um, Parks and Rec had much the same question, being a town entity, could they tap into some of the, uh, the PPE the state has for summer camp, um, counselors and, and whatnot. And we're still looking into that. As far as Gopher money, I, I'm not sure if that would be applicable to the private sector. I know our expenses for public safety is, uh, an affirmative, but I'd have to look closer at that to see if that'd be possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Wilking? Chief, I have one quick one. Um, how are we doing with PPE?
We're fine. Um, we've seen a slight uptick, uh, and I don't believe it's in relation to the two positives. But this weekend, we were a little busier than we've been for a couple of weeks. And today it kept steady. Um, so we did, we burnt through some PPE of the last couple of days. But, uh, I think, uh, the, the supply chain at the state's been able to keep up with our needs. Uh, we've been very conservative with what we ask for and they've been able to fill every time we've asked. So, uh, I don't know if it goes around Rockingham County or, or we're just, you know, trying to work within their system, but, uh, good so far.
Great, okay, thank you. Mr. Dean, if you have nothing else, why don't we, uh, jump right to Mr. Winham, who can give us an update on the outdoor dining applications and, um, also discuss, uh, anything we may need to do as a board.
Uh, great, thank you so much. I just, uh, turned off the, I was the up, the upstairs, I had too much of a, I noticed my, my head too much of a glare, so. So anyway, uh, just want to let the board know that so, uh, the way that, the way that the, uh, stay-at-home order works for the temporary outdoor dining is that if you want to provide that, you have to get permission from the town. So my colleagues and I, you know, other folks that do economic development have come up with an application that we think works very well. Um, there's one instance where you don't have to get permission. I'll get into that in a second, but. So we have this application, uh, the board's seen it, uh, after a couple of iterations, legal signed off on it completely, as did Primex. And that, and that, both of those include if you folks allow outdoor, uh, public spaces. Uh, so that said, I'm going to try to do something I haven't done yet on Zoom. Uh, and if Bob's going to give, allow me the opportunity, I'm going to try to share my screen and, because I'd like the public to see something you folks have seen. So.
Should be good, Darren.
Do I have to make that bigger? It's small. Hey, Bob, you there?
Yep, you should be able to click the, click the green screen at the bottom there, or the green button, share screen button.
Okay, so, oh, I clicked on something that I clicked share. Sorry, this is so small, it's very hard to see. And I apologize to you guys. Darn it. Um, okay. Can you see that, Bob?
Uh, nope, you gotta hit the, uh, you click share screen and then you have to select what you want to share. And then there you go. Now we're.
We're gonna, okay, great.
Yep, now we can see the Word document there.
Okay, well, I, that's not the word, no, you can see my email, I assume, right?
Yeah, through your email, yep.
Okay. I'm trying to, can you move that thing on top? Because every time I need to move that thing so I can actually get to my buttons on top. Do you know how to do that?
You might be able to drag it.
You can drag the toolbar.
Oh, I can? Okay, sorry, you guys. Like I said, my first time doing it. Drag the toolbar. Where? Trying to find a place to drag it. It's giving me dropdown menus. It just went up a little bit higher. Here we go. I can show you this anyway. Okay, so this right here is a shared Google document. And so this, so who has access to this is, uh, fire, police, uh, econ dev, planning, zoning, health officer, highway, and DPW. And so we have been meeting over the last, uh, well, over the last week, week and maybe week and a half, to try to figure out how Exeter could implement safe, temporary outdoor dining for both, uh, businesses that have existing outdoor dining and space they want to put it in and also, uh, also possibly for public. So as an example, we've received these five applications. Um, I have four more coming, one that came tonight. So as an example, I'd like to click on D squared Java, which I received today. So if I click on D squared Java, what we've set it up is that it will allow, um, to see what they put in for, for a map, which they have to put in. Why aren't this open? There we go. Uh, as you can see, they're looking to put a table up against their door and a bench. And they show where they have 10 feet and 12 feet in the sidewalk. So we're requiring everybody to put in some sort of, um, you know, even if it's not professionally done, some sort of, uh, drawing what they want to do. Then we have a section for comments. And you'll see probably just my comment so far because the rest of the team hasn't received this or hasn't seen it because it went on late afternoon. And I just said, it looks like they created enough space in the sidewalks, they're building the tables against their building. And I put my name and everybody else will be able to do that. Eric for fire, et cetera, and James as well. And then, uh, then this, then we, they have the actual application which they have to fill out. So, and they did. So I just want to read, uh, one thing on this application I think is very important. So the top two were written by our, um, so the, so the, the top one here, it was something that we discussed, if someone wants to put something on another piece of property. It says, if you're using private property, include an email slash signed letter from the property owner giving you permission to use their property. Please include all special requirements set forth by, by said property owner, including certificate of insurance, uh, naming them as an additionally insured. Now this will work for, say, when Saw Billy, who I know they want to, uh, open up some of the parking lot to dining, uh, they'll have to get a letter from Mike Lampert. Likewise, uh, when Lexi's opens up, uh, uh, over by the Hankerchief Factory, he'll have to have a letter from, uh, from Andrew. Uh, the next item says, and this is written by Mike Ricker, both these items by Mike Ricker for Primex. Uh, permit applicant business shall provide proof of general liability insurance in the amount of $1 million per occurrence and $2 million aggregate, including the town of Exeter as an additional insured on a primary and non-contributory, contributory basis. The general liability insurance policy shall not exclude claims arising from disease or pandemic or claims occurring during a state of emergency. Also, they have to agree, permit applicant business shall defend and indemnify the town of Exeter, its officials, employees, and volunteers against all demands, claims, suits, and actions seeking damages, penalties, costs, interest, statutory relief, and/or equitable relief uh, on account of bodily injury, death, personal injury, property damage, and/or economic injury arising out of related to the, uh, permit uh, or the activities of the permit applicant. And so what Mike said, that second one really was. And so what Mike said, that second one really was, was that was the bill and suspenders that if any insurance, if there was ever an issue that that checkbox makes any insurance agency just say, yeah, okay, we have to pay. And finally, this was from, written by our attorney in language that our DPW director insisted, of course, as she should have, that this was part of the application. If you're using sidewalk space for patrons, you agree and understand that you will be solely responsible for cleaning the sidewalk space, including the removal or of trash dropped items from the sidewalk daily. And that you may be required to relocate or eliminate sidewalk dining if the prominent public works requires access to the sidewalk space for any reason, including but not limited to cleaning, maintaining or repairing the sidewalk or adjacent street. So anyway, I just wanted you and the public to see just how seriously I think we've taken it. And how do I get out of here, Bob? How do I get back to the thing, Bob?
Or if you drag the, that bar probably at the top of your screen, you can hit stop, share and it'll
Oh, great.
End of the sharing.
Perfect. Sorry for the, no, not great at that yet. Okay, so like I said, we've been meeting and that was, that is fire, police, planning, zoning, the health officer, highway, DPW and myself to try to figure out how we can do this. And so I'm going to read how I think that what we've come up with and see what you folks say. So restaurants that have existing outdoor dining do not need to apply to the town for permission to open as long as they follow the governor's directives. The way the Exeter process will work is that we'll receive applications complete with plans for property not owned by the restaurant and or property that wasn't previously used for outdoor dining. For example, Thirsty Moose won't have to submit an application unless they plan on using property not previously used for outdoor dining, such as their parking lot. If a restaurant wants to serve liquor to temporary outdoor diners and holds a current liquor license, they only need email approval from the state. The application process is as follows. The applicant will submit electronic application plans with me. I upload it to a temporary outdoor dining application folder. The following departments have access to same and can comment, health officer, police, fire, DPW, highway, planning and zoning. After initial comments, a site walk for those departments will be conducted onsite without the applicant present. If everything is good, we will let Russ know. If changes need to be made, I'll share it with the applicant and a second site visit will ensue to ensure compliance. Once deemed compliant, the town manager will sign off and allow the business to open for temporary outdoor dining. This will be true for all applicants unless in their application, they propose to utilize public property. If you folks agree, there is an agreement from the health, econ dev, planning, zoning, highway, fire and police, and by the way, our attorneys and insurance carrier to allow with rigorous restriction, the use of public spaces for temporary outdoor dining. So we talked through a lot of scenarios such as road closures, closing parking spaces on the water side of Water Street, changing traffic patterns and a slew of others. We dismissed all of them for different reasons, but did come up with a scenario that works for all our departments. The same process as outlined a minute ago will ensue, however, we have the following requests and comments. Number one, the timeframe to allow temporary outdoor dining is finite, say from May to November. Two, if town staff can find a better location than proposed in any application, we expect restaurants to work with us to accommodate. We've already had that happen in one instance. A business wanted to locate in a certain area and I'll be telling that business tomorrow that we really don't like that, but we think there's this other area that would work a lot better for us and hopefully for that person as well. And third, we think our sidewalks are wide enough, particularly on Water Street, to accommodate tables if they're up right against the buildings and still allow enough sidewalk space for pedestrians and handicapped persons. Of course, restaurants could get creative to see if other nearby businesses would allow them to put their tables on their property or town property that is strategically located. I know if I was a Realtor, I'd love, I know if I was a Realtor, I'd love to have tables in front of my business provided everybody's being safe. We want to support restaurants getting creative and finding solutions if they want to provide temporary outdoor dining but don't have an outdoor space or an option nearby. Perhaps as an example, several restaurants could reach out to the rinks to allow temporary outdoor dining in the parking lot. One other issue, so I've written a motion that I'll get to at some point later on after we have a discussion if you're interested. But one of the points that Nico brought up today, which is important, is that we have local legislation regarding alcohol in public spaces. As of now, only the select board can allow it. And I would ask as part of the motion that Russ be given temporarily, given that charge. So that obviously it would take a long time if say a restaurant wants to open tomorrow or the next day. And we are pretty well organized to be able to make that happen depending on what you guys decide. Then it would take, it would be awful for them to have to sit for a week and a half, two weeks for another select board meeting. And then have you guys sit through dozen applications or whatever. So that's all I have for right now and I think I'll just put it back to you guys and answer questions.
When you talked about the finite period, and can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, when you talked about the finite period, obviously between May and November because of winter and parking restrictions and so forth, but the application I believe that's in the packet is for 30 days and can we make it so that the applicant would have to renew every 30 days, which would allow the town to iron out any issues if there were any issues?
I think that's a great idea. Let's do that. That's a great idea. I think when the finite period was brought up, was brought up by Jen, she just wanted to make sure that there was no expectation that would be
Yes, understood. Yeah, and that was a good suggestion. And I think, you know, within that period of May to November, the applicant has the understanding that every 30 days that they reapply. Part of your site, and I agree, I think that, you know, one size fits all isn't going to work. And I think that each establishment may have different ideas or different needs. And I think that having, you know, your, the group do a site walk without the applicant, does James Murray need to be part of that?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay.
I would think everybody except maybe plant, the planning, Dave wouldn't need to be a part of the site walk. His stuff will be taken care of probably in the, you know, the, let's call it the paper portion of it, you know what I mean? He just needs to meet what he needs, but every other department I think would actually have to see it.
So I'm envisioning like Doug Eastman, perhaps Jay Perkins representing highway, you, Chief Wilking or somebody he delegates, same with Chief Pullen and James Murray. Okay.
Exactly right. And Jen said she doesn't need to be there as long as Jay's there.
Okay. Comments from the board?
I think it's a great plan. Thanks, Darren, for doing this.
Thank you, guys.
I have a question and sorry for disappearing, but my battery ran out. So I might have missed it while I was plugging in. So what spaces are actually available? What public spaces are actually available? You said no, not on the parking side, the Water Street side?
No, we were talking, we talked a whole bunch of things through. And so what we're doing is we're leaving it up to the applicants to propose to us where they'd like to be if they wanted to be on a public space. And so we'll have to take it one by one and, and see if it's wise or not. I don't know if you were there when I was mentioning about the applicant that did propose something in a public space, which did look like a pretty good proposal, but Jay Perkins actually said, look, you know, that's an okay proposal, but how about I counter propose this and that's what we're going to be presenting to the applicant tomorrow. So if someone wants to come in and say, as an example, Sea Dog put one in and they want tables up against their building and that looks like that's going to work. According to Jay, they can have probably about four to six tables. I think it would be just along the, sort of along the sidewalk because they have enough space. Our sidewalks are far enough away from those tables that you'd have the social distancing, you'd have the ADA compliance and you'd have, you wouldn't have to have pedestrians walking into traffic to try to get around tables.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and the other, another concern is we're going to have three potential construction projects. We have the library that's already underway, the Ioka is starting. And then we just heard, you know, our presentation from Elliot last meeting who's going to be starting his project. In addition to his business to start to open, there's going to be increased traffic. There'll be idling at the stop sign by the bandstand. I mean, I just, I don't think we should consider using parking spaces or taking into consideration, you know, using the sidewalks, particularly in that, in that stretch because I think there's a lot going on.
So you mean that stretch from say the Ioka to where Trattoria starts? I mean, would you, would you envision Trattoria being able to do it and Sea Dog being able to do it? Because I wouldn't want to see, it would, because the area you're talking about right now with the library and those two buildings, I don't think the, I don't think the two buildings down there, restaurants would be affected other than noise.
No, I agree with you there, but as you had said, if, if, if folks start to talk to other, you know, property owners, you know, in front of their stores and all that, we need to take into consideration that in that stretch, there's going to be two construction projects, one behind with the library and then, you know, increased traffic by the bandstand. But the two establishments you just mentioned, I don't see that as a problem. Any other, anybody else in the board have any comments or questions for Darren?
To your, your comment, Mr. Chair, that you just made, that's part of the process of the different department heads going out and looking around. I understand your, your concerns, but I think that, that's part of the, part of how this is going to work.
Yes, correct. That's what I was saying. Is having that, that, that committee or group or whatever. The one size not fitting all, obviously.
It's, what's going to be interesting is I did ask a question of the BEA commissioner today. And the question was, is there a target date for reopening indoor dining, even if the limited capacity now, if, if there's not spiking COVID cases? And the answer was, yeah, we don't know. So what we don't know, one of the things we pointed out was there was a suggestion, believe it or not, and Jay actually tried to price these things to put Jersey barriers from, you know, all along the water, water side of Water Street to allow people to do things out in the parking spaces. But we found that it was going to be way too costly, they're going to be hard to get, it would, it would be picking winners and losers. And so we think we've come up with a way, like you said, you know, one size not fitting all to try to go ahead and see how we can accommodate those we can accommodate.
Right. If there are no other comments or questions for Darren, Darren, did you have a motion you wanted the board to consider?
Sure, I would say the motion would be to empower the town manager to allow on a case by case basis, temporary outdoor dining for Exeter restaurants on public spaces once each application is approved as safe and acceptable by the following town departments, health, economic development, planning, zoning, fire, police, highway and DPW. Restaurants must abide by Governor Sununu's stay at home 2.0 order and adhere to all local laws. Motion also allows for town manager to temporarily allow alcohol in public spaces to restaurants approved for temporary outdoor dining, providing the restaurant has a previous liquor license.
I move that.
Second.
Julie, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm just questioning, well, never mind. Shall I take the role? In the motion, but I was just going to ask Darren to share that screen that he was reading off of so somebody here could make that.
I actually, I emailed it to Russ and to Nico if they can pull up their email.
Russ can't make the motion either.
All right, Nico, do you want to send it to me?
Sorry.
I can do a share screen if you want.
Or just, if you email it to me, I'll just go ahead and read it.
Thank you, Lovey.
Yep.
Just give me a quick second here to find sent. Lovey, you're going to have it in two seconds as long as Barracuda doesn't stop it.
Two seconds has passed.
It went.
All righty. Now this will be the time where like email is slow as all can be. Here we go. All right, I'd like to make a motion to empower town manager to allow on a case by case basis, temporary outdoor dining for Exeter residents on public spaces once each application is approved as safe and acceptable by the following town departments. Health, economic development, planning, zoning, fire, police, highway and DPW. Restaurants must abide by Governor Sununu's stay at home 2.0 order and adhere to all local laws. Motion also allows for town manager to temporarily allow alcohol in public spaces to restaurants approved for temporary outdoor dining, providing the restaurant has a previous liquor license.
Second.
Motion is the second. Madam Clerk.
Select woman Cowan, aye. Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Select woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Dean, you're back up for the Gopher agreement?
Yes, so the Gopher agreement is something that we need to submit to the state in order to qualify for reimbursement from our allotment of the $362,000 and any other funding the Gopher may be able to offer to the town. So the only thing I need is the board to approve the town manager to sign the Gopher agreement and act as the designated signing authority from here on out.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
This is on page one of the agreement.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the town manager to apply, manage and have the authority to complete actions for any Gopher agreement we may receive. Gopher being the governor's office of economic recovery.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk.
Select woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Did that cover it all, Russ?
Hopefully, I think it will. I have to hedge my bets because this is new territory. Hopefully they won't kick it back, but it sounded good to me.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to regular business, we just have a couple of yield tax abatements. I will turn it over to you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a yield tax for MAP 66 lot one in the amount of $161.66.
Okay.
Motion is the second. Madam Clerk.
Select woman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Select woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would, I move to approve a yield tax for MAP 13 lot three in the amount of $306.58.
Second.
Motion is the second. Madam Clerk.
Select woman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Select woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
unanimous. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Dean, the permit that's in the packet, is that going to be covered under the authority that was given to you this evening or is this something different?
Yes, that's covered under the authority that you granted earlier.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Town managers report.
I really only had.
Yes.
I'm sorry, on this application, there are many things to talk about like lighting, et cetera, et cetera. And this application hasn't checked off anything but the dimension plan. And I'm just, and your determination of whether it applies or not, you know, please consider those things.
Okay.
Thanks. It isn't complete as it is, so it's going to continue to evolve.
Okay.
My report, I only had a couple of things I just wanted to mention quickly. One is that the farmer's market, I just want to make sure that the board knew that the great job that all of our staff did really coordinating that effort with the farmer's market people. There've been two so far. We worked out the kinks a little bit from week one, week two was a little bit better. So it's, it's difficult, it's challenging, but it's, it's working and people are able to get certain things from the market and so we're grateful for that. And the only other thing I had was just wanted to thank Tim Trigia, our electrical inspector who retired last week. Tim was part time, but he was a very good employee for the town and was well skilled and did an excellent job. And for personal reasons, he's decided this is his time to step away and spend more time with his granddaughter that's on the way and he's excited about that. So we wish him all the best. all the best.
Great, thank you. We wish him the best, too. Health and happiness in his retirement. Thank you. Next up, we have select board committee meetings. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, did you have any committee meetings?
Not since our last meeting, no.
Okay. Selectman Brown?
I did not, but I have some, I'll save it for correspondence, I had some interactions with community members related to communications committee.
Okay. Mr. Dean, I'm also planning to reach out, I believe the facilities advisory committee's probably one of the only committees other than the CBA that hasn't met yet. Does that sound right to you?
Uh, yeah.
Everyone's pretty much met at least once.
No, the HCC is meeting Thursday for the first time.
Okay, all right.
And I think maybe the...
And the Heritage Commission tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Dean, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, I apologize. The communications committee, I'm not sure, has met either.
Okay.
Recently.
I'd like to reach out to both of them and see if they could start to consider putting together a meeting date and an agenda via Zoom, just because there's been no meeting since February. And I think that it's, you know, with the way the Bobs worked all this out, I think that would be reasonable to have those committees that haven't met yet meet just to touch base if nothing else.
Right, and we'll confirm that, but we've been, especially in recent weeks, we've been more and more comfortable with Zoom, so we've been getting the word out to the different chairs that we're ready when they are, and they can call a meeting anytime.
Great. Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, in fact, I have had a couple of meetings and a few more to go. The energy committee met, and we discussed, it's not community aggregation, but it's a new group that's going to talk about community aggregation of electric, electric energy, where, excuse me, communities would gather together and sort of divvy out where we buy our electricity and get it as a group rate. And so they're working on, Russ, do you remember the name of the group?
Uh, the group that's dealing with community power?
Community Power, that's the word.
Right.
And so we're looking into that, NHMA is having a seminar on it, and then there's another thing on June 5th. So when the energy committee comes back, then we'll have a better idea of how do we join this community power, because right now it's kind of centered north and east of us. The Heritage Commission is meeting Tuesday, tomorrow night, and we're going to be talking about heritage neighborhoods, which is a different way of getting a neighborhood to recognize itself as opposed to a historic district which has the rules and regulations. It's more a way of celebrating and helping you help neighbors communicate about how to preserve both their neighborhood and whatever else they see out there. So that's going to be a lot of fun, actually. And the Historic District Commission is meeting on Thursday, and our application is for changes to the Ioka. So I expect an audience for that one.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Selectwoman Cowan?
Uh, yeah, I did, I have had meetings. I met with the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, we did a couple of abatements. Everything went smoothly, and then I had my first planning board meeting last week, which also went relatively smoothly. We heard one case, which was continued on, so we didn't vote, and it was not a new case. So happy to jump in, glad it went well.
Thank you so much. I actually watched it, and it did go well. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, I forgot to mention that we had a Conservation Commission meeting, too. I've been doing Zoom for days and weeks. And we talked about a parcel of land that's been part of a conservation easement for a new project that's going on out on Epping Road, and it was decided that, or was discussed that we might save that area as just an open, not trailed area so that people can just go and enjoy the woods. But also, there was some discussion about hunting and whether or not we would allow hunting there. And I don't remember where that ended up. We haven't totally decided on all the aspects of that piece of property, but there was a strong argument for hunting. And, you know, it's a short period of time, and we don't have any other spaces that it's allowed, and a lot of people like to hunt. So that's coming up, some decision about that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move forward to correspondence, and I think, Mr. Dean, the only correspondence we had in the packet was from the New Hampshire Employment, giving us the COVID-19 unemployment update.
Yes. That's good information to look over, that statewide that just came out, just for awareness purposes for the board.
Selectman Brown, you had something you wanted to discuss under correspondence?
Yeah, I just had been approached by several town residents about the issue of public shaming happening, where people are not exhibiting their best fellow citizen behavior in town, calling people out about masks. And I was witness to one event in Swayze where a girl was wavering on her bike about 20 feet from a couple, and the couple harangued the girl in front of her parents. And so it's just, it's a twofold issue that I'll bring up later about, you know, social media can be a very polarizing platform in social media, while in legal circles it can be considered a public forum, it is still, if we're just speaking of Facebook, Twitter, and the like, these are private companies, or these are public companies rather, but they're corporations and not town entities. So involvement in those things are more likely to get people galvanized on different sides. And so one of the residents who was complaining to me was showing me Facebook posts in which someone had taken the liberties to take photographs of people unmasked in stores. And again, while this might seem, you know, it's just, I find we're going in a direction that's not conducive to cordial citizenry, so I would really encourage citizens to, I'm really, I feel flattered that people have felt comfortable enough to talk to me individually, and a lot of them are people I hadn't known before, but I would really, I think the board should encourage people to write in their experiences during all this and to let us know, because as we've, I think, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf had mentioned at the beginning of this to the police chief, that we need to be aware of setting environments where home is not the safest place. And so now we're two-plus months into a situation where we've got people, you know, sheltered in places that may not be the safest shelter, and on top of that, you have a rising social climate of alienation and shaming or whatever we call this. But, you know, just something that I'll bring up later with more of a cooked thing to present to the board, but, yeah, definitely something to keep all our ears out for.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, along the lines of Selectman Brown's comments, this is a really hard time, and the social distancing is becoming oddly close to home instead because of social media. And one of the things that happened on the governor's task force on reopening was a presentation by NHMA, which Russ had mentioned, and one of the questions was about enforcement, and that they're getting a lot of questions from municipalities about whether or not the social distancing of six feet can be or should be enforced, and there's no answer to that question. So I know in other states, people are being fined and given tickets for violations, but we don't have a mask board, so that's not something we can do. But just to keep in your head that it might come up, that somebody's going to make some decision about enforcement.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Selectwoman Gilman, I'm not going to let you off yet. I was remiss in asking you if you had anything else from your other job that you wanted to report.
The legislature is...
You'll be here soon.
The legislature is reconvening on June 11th at the Wittenmore Arena at UNH, and the Senate will actually be taking over Representatives Hall. Shock and amazement. So we're going to start up business. I don't know how many people will actually attend, but hopefully we'll have a majority or a quorum. So that's really all I got.
Thank you. We'll look forward to hearing more. Reviewing the board calendar, we're next due to meet on June 1st, and then also June 15th. And we'll determine the times as we get closer, depending upon if we have board interviews. We don't have any non-public session. And before we adjourn, I wish everybody on the board and in the town a very safe and healthy Memorial Day weekend, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody again on June 1st. So if there are no other discussion points or comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion to second, Madam Clerk, one more time.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.